I will, if I could call this meeting to order. Thank you all for your patience. Sorry, we are starting a little bit late. We had a 1:30 budget workshop that went a little bit late, and so thank you all for joining us and for your patience. For the record, it is Tuesday, June 20th. We'll start with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilmember Mylum.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Borden.
Here.
Mayor DeVere.
Here. Item number two is a pledge of allegiance. If you will all rise and join us in the pledge, sure flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number two is our, or three is our community invocation. And tonight will be led by Pastor Troy Drake with Cavalry Chapel. If you will all join us in the community invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, would you join me? Pray. Well, Lord God in heaven, thank you so much for your grace in this beautiful place that we get to live and how the founders were so wise and inspired to pen the words that we could have life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And so we just thank you, God, for that. You've given us a free place to live and the pursuit of that. And so we just thank you. Laura, we just want to acknowledge you, that you are the one who made this great nation. And Lord, I just pray that you'd protect all the things that go on here in the summer in Meridian. I'm just thankful for this great city that we have. And so we're praying for the Dairy Days Parade and events surrounding it, and Fourth of July, and all the other things that I saw on the calendar. And, Lord, that you would just bless it and that people would be grateful. And, Lord, we're also praying for the first responders here this evening, those who are our police force and the firefighters. And, Lord, that you would protect them as they protect the citizens, Lord, and that we would just be grateful for what we have. And, Lord, I just pray for those who have no hope tonight and that they would turn to you as you are the one who gives life and hope. And so lastly, Lord, and not least, we just want to acknowledge these servants here that we've elected and that you would just give them great wisdom here in small details or big things and that, Lord, we would just appreciate them. And I pray that somehow they would know that. And, Lord, that you would give them lots of grace and wisdom in making decisions here this evening. And so we thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Troy.
Thank you.
Okay, item number four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borden.
On the consent agenda, item 7L is proposed to be resolution number 17-2017. And we will be adding ordinance under 11B. That's identified as ordinance number 17-1732B. And the proposed ordinance in 11A is 17-1734. And with those changes, I would move that we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to amend or approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried. Mr. Clerk?
Madam Mayor, there were no signups for item number five.
Thank you. Item number six is a proclamation. When I move to the front podium, I will say that we're excited to be reading a proclamation regarding the 2017 year of the Lions. The Lions Club will be celebrating their 100-year anniversary on June 3rd, and, or they did, and helped plant 10 trees around Meridian to celebrate their centennial. So maybe you can kick this off with a little bit of information about what you've done.
It'd be honored to, Madam Mayor, council. My name is Dennis Burks. We came here from Mountain Home. We now reside in the greatest city in Idaho, right here in Meridian. We started this adventure about eight weeks ago when we wanted to set up Idaho as an example. So we started traveling Idaho. We received these proclamations. In return, what we're going to do is take them back to Chicago next week for our 100th celebration as 50,000 Lions from around the world gather in that to celebrate our 100th year. It's an honor and a privilege to sit here and represent the Lions of Idaho, and we look forward to carrying on many more projects with you and your staff.
Well, and maybe you can tell us about your big event this weekend.
This weekend and that, as you can see, there is no Lions here from Meridian. They're at an undisclosed location. They won't even tell me where they're at because they're preparing for this rodeo this weekend. And that is their second rodeo that their PRCA sanctioned. They're extremely excited. They said they've got a great stock coming in. They've got great cowboys coming in and cowgirls, and they're very excited to entertain the people of Meridian.
And the rodeo happens in the future Borup Park on the corner, well, kind of near the corner of Cherry Lane and McDormott.
They do, yes, yes, ma'am.
I had to plug that, so. I'm going to come and join you. Turn this around so we're facing our citizens. Okay, whereas, the Lions Club International was founded in 1917 and is celebrating their 100th anniversary and is the world's largest service organization with over 1.4 million members in 215 countries. And whereas, under the motto "We Serve," Lions Club empower volunteers to meet humanitarian needs, encourage peace, and promote international understanding through participation in club activities in their communities. And whereas, Lions Clubs in Idaho have provided vision screenings for over 30,000 students. And whereas, the Meridian Lions Club has, was chartered on September 20th, 1938, and the Meridian Roaring Lions Club was chartered December 5th, 2016. And whereas, the city of Meridian appreciates and supports the service provided by the Lions Club members, especially in our local area, as they give up their time, talents, and resources to our community. Therefore, I, Mayor Tammy DeVere, here do proclaim the year 2017 as the year of the Lions here in the city of Meridian and encourage our citizens to show their appreciation by supporting the Lions Club in their many activities. And I'm honored to give this to Dennis. And I will tell you that when I was in Austria, I was able to visit the Lions Club. There, they were having a Christmas market. And they're the same across the world. They're community-minded. They love to give back to their communities. They are focused on improving the communities that they serve in. And we want to tell you how much we appreciate our Lions Club and for you joining us here today.
Thank you so very much.
Okay, item seven is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
Item 7L, resolution number 17-2017. With that, I move you approve the consent agenda. For the mayor to sign, the clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Mary Nun, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borden.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we'll move right into our action items. Item 9A is a public hearing continued from June 6th on H. 2017-0007. Mr. Chatterton.
Madam Mayor, I thought a couple of introductory remarks would be in order for this application. Recently, I heard that at least one member of our community felt that planning staff are advocating for the developer or the development on this application. And I think from time to time, it's really good to review what planning staff, the role of planning staff, what it is and what it isn't. Our role is never to advocate for proposed development or advocate on behalf of developer. We're not pro-development. We're not anti-development. In fact, I know a lot of local developers who would laugh or cry at the suggestion that we're somehow on their side. Nevertheless, we are advocates. We're advocates for a timely resolution of each application. Whether the answer is yes or no, it's getting to that final answer, or if the approval is some sort of modification of the application, which often occurs too. We're advocates for the comprehensive plan as the community's vision. We're advocates for upholding the zoning code. But when we see that the zoning code isn't working or it's outdated, we are duty-bound and do, in fact, propose changes to it as we do several times a year. Finally, we're advocates for striking the best balance we can between development and the impacts it creates on our community. Sometimes, admittedly, that's a delicate balance. But the idea is to create the best outcome for our community that we possibly can. That's our role. And I just wanted to, I know you wanted me to clarify that, and that's, I think, the context of this application as well as others. There are difficult applications. There are far easier ones. And sometimes, things, you know, can get complex. But we always try to strike that balance. I'm going to turn it over to Josh. He's so important, he actually got a preamble.
Right. So the application here before you is again, Goddard Creek. As we've gone through in previous hearings for this specific application, there are several applications tied to this particular project. They are a comprehensive plan map amendment. In this case, the conditional use permit for the multifamily development has been withdrawn. A conditional use permit for a self-storage facility in a CC zoning district, a rezone to rezon that portion of the property with the storage units to CC, a preliminary plat, and a development agreement modification. So without going into all of the history we've gone through in several of these applications, I will attempt to go through the memo that I drafted and explain the changes requested by the applicant in regards to what they were previously asking for and then contrast that with what they're asking for now. So the, since the city council hearing on the 23rd of this year, excuse me, 23rd of May of this year, the applicant has submitted a revised preliminary plat and landscape plan that changes to the plat and landscape plan are as follows. So as you go through my slide here, you'll see a slide for the comprehensive plan map amendment, which is consistent with what they had previously asked for, from office and high density to mixed use. And this is the proposed preliminary plat. So previously, the plat included 22 building lots and five common lots. This revised plat is for a two-lot subdivision. On the left-hand side, or the west portion, would be the area that's zoned CC, one lot there for the proposed storage units. And on the east side of that is currently zoned R4, and that's proposed to stay that way. They, as I said previously, they did withdraw the conditional use permit for the multifamily project. The developer opted to not move forward with that. And as part of this, as I mentioned, there was a development agreement modification request. The applicant is requesting to move forward with that, but they would like to have the ability to have the zoning and the land use ability on this property be in line with what's R4. And I can explain that a little bit further. Currently, as part of that Loxa Falls development, this property was zoned R4, but the uses available to the property were limited to those in the LO zoning district. The applicant would like the R4 uses, which are typically your single-family homes, duplexes, things like that, to be allowed there. There is not a current development proposal for that project, and so that will be something that this property will have to come back to the city in the future for a subdivision if that is indeed what happens on the property. There are certain conditions that need to be modified, and we can go through those in your, in the memo if you'd like. The applicant is proposing their landscaping, and their landscaping plan does show a sidewalk and landscaping across the frontage of that proposed R4 parcel that would get us the required landscaping as well as a sidewalk that would otherwise not be installed at this time. Typically, we like to see that happen when there's a gap in the sidewalk like this, and the applicant has shown that on their landscape plan. I'm happy to go through some of the conditions that need to be modified if you'd like. So I can actually pull the memo up here if that would be easier. So as I mentioned, there are certain conditions associated with this that are no longer applicable because the multifamily portion of the project has been withdrawn. There's actually quite a number that need to be removed as part of the application. But we've noticed that there are a couple of things that we wanted to address that need to be added or otherwise modified as a result of that. So a couple of things here, except for construction of the storage facility, no building permits shall be issued on Lot 2, which is the storage unit portion of the project until subdivision has been approved by the city council. And we wanted to make sure that Lot 2 should only be developed with those uses allowed in the R4 zoning district. Excuse me, Lot 2 would be the portion that is the R4. I apologize. The 25-foot wide landscape buffer and detached sidewalk along McMillan Road shall be constructed in its entirety with the first phase of development. The intent is to have that constructed when the storage units are constructed. And then, there's a couple conditions to be modified. Modify condition 1.1.1E as follows. The site shall develop with a self-storage facility, strike through the multifamily residential development because, as I said, that's been withdrawn, and shall comply with the specific use standards that's set forth in the UDC for self-storage facilities. And then third, third condition there, modify condition 1.1.1D as follows. Future development shall comply with the design standards listed in the UDC and the City of Meridian Architectural Standards Manual. We wanted to make sure that those specific things for multifamily were also, were strike through and removed from that condition as well. I'm happy to answer any questions you have on these conditions or on the application itself.
Council, any questions for staff at this time?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
Bill, I've got a question for you. DA has never been modified, right? They're coming through now on a conditional use for this application, right?
Mr. Bird, yeah, there's Mr. Bird, members of council, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Bird. I'm trying to recall. I don't believe that the DA has been modified previously because the prior construction of the apartments was part of the original planned unit development that was allowed back then. And so this, this, I think, is a DA modification is in here to match up the zoning of what they're requesting to fit the storage units.
That's, that was my, excuse me, Mayor. That was my question, Bill. I didn't see anywhere in the application that we were modifying in the DA. Are we doing, Josh? Did I misread it, or?
Councilmember Bird, yes, that was always part of the application, was a development agreement modification because as-
Still part of it.
Yes. As Mr. Nary said, that it was never in line with-
Oh, yeah.
Storage was never unallowed.
I just need to read. I'm sorry.
Any other questions from council? Not at this time. Is the applicant here? If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Of course. My name is Tim Alatori. I'm the project architect, and my address is 6532 Lone Tree Boulevard, Suite 102, Rockland, California.
Thank you.
And I started this project a year ago, and I feel like the last man standing. I'm back here. We've lost everybody else. I just want to echo the comments that were made about the planning staff and just be on record to say that I've worked in many, several states, dozens of cities, and the Meridian planning staff is one of the most professional and objective that I've worked with. We haven't always agreed, but I think that's a good planner who, you know, puts the needs of the community first. And so I just want to have that on the record, that we're grateful for Josh and Bill and the other city staff. As Josh mentioned, I don't get a mouse today or a keyboard. I'll just give you that.
Yeah, I can go ahead and do it for you.
I'll point to you. Okay, yeah, so you can go to the next slide. As Josh mentioned, we have eliminated the housing component of it. You can go to the next slide here, Josh. Just to recap, the area we're talking about, next slide. And Josh already covered this. Oh, yeah, we're going to stay here. So just one point on our tentative map. Josh had mentioned that we're, oh, thank you, we were seeking to align the allowed uses on that eastern parcel to be consistent with the R4 zoning. If, now, that is to our benefit. It makes this property more valuable and having the land use consistent with the zoning. Right now, they're in conflict, which makes development more difficult. But right now, we have absolutely no proposed use or project. There's no buyer. There's nothing in the works for that parcel. So if that is a point of contention, we're fine with just leaving it how it is, just to get something moving on this parcel. But it would be nice if we could have those be in line. Thank you for the keyboard. Just to recap where we're at with the storage, the storage facility project hasn't changed from what you saw last month. We're still at around 150,000 square feet of storage with a 1,300-square-foot office and in a manager's unit of about 2,000 square feet. And we have, as Josh mentioned, we're proposing to continue the sidewalk. Right now, on the western border, where it opens up to the Rhona subdivision, there's a sidewalk that stops, and there's a break in that sidewalk up until you get to Goddard Creek. So we are proposing to connect those sidewalks to continue the pedestrian path from the cellway apartments and the Goddard Creek subdivision all the way to the west. And then, as shown here, we're proposing also to landscape that whole area. So the landscaping that's existing on the Goddard Creek Way, western side, that would be continued around the south or the north side of McMillan Road and then wrap, wrap the project. And then the sidewalk would continue. Focusing now on the storage facility, as I mentioned, we're proposing a very rich, layered, textured landscape around the development with an emphasis on the McMillan and the cellway apartment elevations, providing screening and setbacks as per city standards. And then, we're proposing to build out the development in two phases. Phase one would be to build all the perimeter buildings and two of the inner buildings, the majority of the architectural features on the perimeter buildings. So that would encapsulate the site, protect the view corridors, security, et cetera. And then, hopefully, the market continues to be good, and we can build out phase two, which would be for those other two interior buildings. Connectivity, our primary and really the only access point for the public would be in the center of the self-storage site onto McMillan. And for emergency access, we do have two access points for emergency vehicles. And the one in the northwest corner, that would allow to connect to future development that is yet to be planned over there. That was something that city staff asked us to provide. Just a typical storage unit plan. There's nothing very complicated about what we're doing. And then we're going to have downstairs office with display area for selling boxes and packing materials. And upstairs, we'll have a two-bedroom manager's unit that will be onsite, security throughout, throughout the day. The architecture of the buildings, we have 18 tower elements that are around the perimeter, and they're spaced about 100, 120 feet on center. And then those are broken up with some scoring in the exterior facade as well as some architectural variation in color and some foam build-outs and cornices. So the whole site, all sides, will have a nice cohesive design. Our tower elements wrap the corners. There's not going to be these kind of western false front facades. Everything will appear solid and thought out. We try to keep everything at a pedestrian scale. We have the wainscot band across the bottom, windows, columns, arches. Everything is down to the pedestrian scale. So when you're walking down McMillan, you have trees on both sides and this nice little building to your right, and it's not going to feel overbearing or imposing for the pedestrians. Again, here's, here's a shot of this. Now, we don't have all the landscape in here, but as my first exhibit, we have landscape on both sides of the walkway, a bunch of really nice trees that have been put in there. That's our main tower element. And then view looking east on McMillan. And again, this would be the view as you come from Goddard Creek. That's that southeast corner. So we have the tower element there, and the architecture wraps the corner. And then there would be landscaping, screening that. So if you have any questions, I'm here and as well as John from TO Engineering. He's, he's our civil engineer. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council, any questions?
I have none, Mayor. This time.
Thank you.
We had a number of individuals sign up this evening. Diane McLean signed up against, does not wish to testify. Dorothy Pfefferly signed up against, does not wish to testify. David Blasko signed up against and does not wish to testify. Pam Fiskus signed up against, does not wish to testify. Carol Young signed up against, does not wish to testify. John Hopkins signed up against, does not wish to testify. Cheryl Hopkins signed up against, does not wish to testify. Linda Ullman signed up against and would like to testify.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us. If you'll please kick this off with your name and address.
I will. My name is Linda Ullman. I live at 2735 West Root Creek Street.
Thank you.
And I wasn't sure, I didn't know that the three stories were not going in. I just found this out, okay? But the only thing that I would like to say is, I had gone to all the meetings, along with a lot of other people, when they put in the cellway. And we knew that they would be going in, but the one thing that we really wanted is for the, the gentleman to drive through our community and see how nice our community was and at least keep the colors and the same things to where it all kind of came together. And I guess that's kind of what I would like to ask, is that they, it does look like it fits into our community if this passes and if this goes. We do have three within a mile, three storage units within a mile. I think that's a lot. But, you know, if it's going to happen, it's going to happen. And I do ask that we do keep at the R4, which was in the agreement. And that something is settled because we really want the best for our community. And we were at the last meeting, and we've been, we've only missed one. And the applicant was not here the last meeting, so then they did this meeting, and we, some of us have had to postpone our vacations or readjust our stuff. of us have had to postpone our vacations or readjust our stuff to be here to let you know our concerns about this. And basically, that's kind of all I want to say. I just hope that we settle it tonight, know what's going on, and that they do kind of drive around our development and see what a nice community we, that we have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Linda, would you mind if I asked you a question?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that I heard you correct. Since you've learned that the apartments have won away, has your opposition changed?
Well, no, not exactly. My main thing was having three stories of the apartments, and that I did not want that.
Madam Mayor.
Am I, am I misunderstanding? Is that still going on, or, okay?
Madam Mayor. May I fault? So, yeah, Linda, the, the request is that the, the apartment portion be removed.
Okay.
And so with that, does that change your opposition? Are you still opposed to the project? Do you support it? Are you neutral? Share with me your perspective.
I feel like some of it's gonna happen anyway, just like we knew the cellway would. And I just want it to fit into our community. If it is going to happen, if we're going to have the stories, just make them nice-looking, is what I'm asking. And whatever, like, if this comes up again, okay, if they, if we, if you vote on this and you leave it at the R4, my question would be to you, it will be another meeting before anything is built there? I mean, will we know, kind of, or just, they can build whatever they want, as long as it fits into R4?
Yes, I would. Mr. Neri, you want to explain that process?
I'm not sure how that works, yet.
So, so the, the R4, what they're asking is simply to leave it at that, so any future, whatever they want to do there, they're still gonna have to come back to present that to the mayor and council for what they would like to do. Right now, it's just gonna be bare ground-
Right.
And nothing else.
Okay. That's kind of what I was wondering, if they, they would have to come back and-
They would come back with a preliminary plat.
Yes.
Because the only thing for the parcel that they're going to remain in R4, they would need to plat that, and that would be, that would be a public process.
Okay.
So you would see how the layout would be, but it would be for R4.
But it would be for the R4.
Yes.
Because I know that, that is within the agreement. So, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Linda.
Jim Sol, Jim Ullman signed up against and does not wish to testify. Angie Ludlow signed up against and does not wish to testify. Richard Stillwell signed up against and would like to testify.
Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Richard Stillwell, 15, 5117 North Dove Ridge Place-
Thank you.
In the Kelly Creek subdivision. I'm more confused than I was before. I have a real problem with the procedure-
Can you move that?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
With the procedure that has gone on, is that, I was at the, first of all, this started out in December 23rd for the zoning and planning commission, and there was another meeting on, in March 23rd, I believe, and then yet another one in April, at which point the zoning and planning commission recommended denial, and then it came to city council. And that appeared on the 23rd of May, I believe. I may be wrong about these dates. At which time, a motion was made to approve the request to change the zoning to allow the apartment complex. Well, that motion was defeated. You know, in everyday parlance, in the King's English, if, if a motion is defeated, you would think that that was a denial. But then, we come to learn that, no, it isn't a denial. And so now it appears that we're back to where we started again, which is, are asking for a motion to amend the zoning, the R4 zoning. Am I correct about that? Or at least expand the uses of that? Am I correct about that?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Since it was my motion, maybe I'll speak to it. It was before us, as it was, and so we have to take an action, whether it's an approval, and that motion gets approved, and then, then the action is taken. Or if I were to make the motion to deny it, and then that motion was passed, that would be the action. Where the motion is what failed, the project didn't fail, the motion failed, so the action is what failed. And then that's when it got a little confusing, because the applicant got back up and said, "Well, maybe we can separate these." So then, it seemed like there was, really, the major opposition was to the multifamily, not so much to the storage units. So we went ahead and pushed it to another meeting to allow the developer time to work with staff to separate the projects, so that we can either hear them separately, or they could decide not to do it, which it sounds like they've decided not to do the multifamily at all, and just stick with the storage. But yes, still changing the zoning to allow for the storage, as opposed to just whatever it was before. But, but it was still, there was no approval or denial that took place. So then, it took more time than anticipated to fully separate these and have the process go through, so that we could actually make the decision tonight. But in the, in the decision, in the motion that I made to continue it to tonight, we made clear that the decision will be made tonight, that what's, what they bring for us is, we're either gonna approve it or deny it, we're not gonna push it to another meeting to decide later. So it is just the storage, and then the other side, R4, which like it was pointed out, is usually single-family homes or duplexes, but not apartments. Does that help?
Well, I understand, so we have two issues before us, right? One is the storage unit. First, the story, at the end of May, the storage unit was going to be moved to the east side, and then apparently, they were not able to gain, I guess, egress, or changes of egress from the county. So now we're back on the west side, where it was originally planned to be, okay? So that's one issue. And, you know, I have no position on that one. My other issue is, what about the other five acres? Now, there's something in here about further, the applicant is requesting that this property, meaning the five acres, I believe, is no longer be allowed to be developed with office as originally approved under the Lockshaw Falls Plan Unit Development. The study proposes that the property be developed with allowed uses listed in the-
Sir, can you pull the microphone over?
Okay.
You can pull it over.
Okay. Do I need to start again?
No.
Okay, fine.
I think just-
In other words, he's now proposing that the property be developed, allowed uses with the UDC table, okay? So there appears to be a change there as well. The problem with this proposal is that I have no idea what they're going to put in there. Just as a normal human being, I would like to see what was going in there before we start making changes. And so I, you know, I oppose this. The last point that I would like to make, and then I'll be quiet, is that through this whole process, starting with the zoning and planning commission, there are notices required, in fact, signs posted where the development's supposed to occur for so many days, and so on and so forth. What we've had here for the last couple meetings is that things keep changing. I mean, the, the, the storage unit was going to be on the east side, then the west side, now it's back on the west side, I'm sorry. And I just found out about this about a day ago, okay? And apparently, that wasn't the zoning and planning department's fault, because they just found out about it recently. But if we're going to have citizen participation, they have to be given notice. And notice has to be more than 24 or 48 hours, you know, certainly, including a weekend. Otherwise, you know, this, it just doesn't work well, folks. I mean, you know, people have, you know, within our HOA, we have to consult, does the HOA take a position? Does it not take a position? What about the neighbors that are going to be affected? Is that we have to be given proper notice, and proper notice means at least a week or two weeks, so that we can figure out what's going on. Otherwise, you're gonna get a random set of citizens down here, who may understand it, or like me, isn't quite sure what's going on, and really can't take a position. I can't tell you that I really oppose the eastern five acres, because I have no idea what's going in there. Okay? So I would respectfully request that you deny their petition to make any changes on that eastern five acres, until they can come back with some kind of an idea of what they're gonna put in there.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, and sir, with, with all due respect, it's because of the notice that was given to the citizens, and the citizens came, that we had a second and third meeting. Had nobody come to the first one, and there was no objection to it, I imagine we probably would have just passed it as it was. But because there was so much objection, we took a step back, slowed it down, gave the developer a chance to make the neighbors happy by changing the project with what all the concerns were. And so that's, that's why we're here today. And it sounded like, you know, when, when the applicant got up, that he wasn't completely set on keeping R4. He'd like to, to make it simpler for future development, but if there, if it sounds like there ends up being a lot of objection to that being R4, that might be something that we can, I don't know how that process works, where that's what's before us, if that's something that we can keep that, or if he'd have to come back again. But I don't know. But it's, I just wanted to emphasize that it's, it's because-
And I hope that you understand that, you know, as a citizen, you know, by profession, I'm an application developer, software engineer. I don't understand all of, you know, all the jargon in terms of-
Can you pull that?
I, you know, by profession, I'm an application engineer, software developer. I don't understand all the jargon, and I certainly don't understand all your procedures. I'm not saying that they aren't good procedures, it's just, I don't, you know, we don't understand them. And it's not reasonable to expect them to understand all the details. For an example, when a motion to approve is voted down, I think, you know, for the average person, they would think, okay, that issue has been solved. Well, you know, we found out, no, that isn't the way it works. And so it's just a confusing process. And I think if you're sensing some frustration, which I am a little frustrated, is that the number of hours that I've spent sitting in these, in these hearings, not only here, but also in terms of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I mean, I must be up at about eight, 10 hours, plus the time that I've, and I, as you can tell, I haven't really dug into this. I mean, if I was going to actually learn this, I'd be at this, I would have put in at least 20 to 40 hours on trying to understand what these various designations. I still have no idea what he's proposing in terms of the UDC Table 11-2A-2, because when I look in there, there's a, there's a whole list of, of uses with different codes next to them, so I have no idea which one applies to, to the, you know, to the subject property here. That's my only point. It, you know, that, the, the procedure needs to be more transparent. That's, that's all I'm saying. So I thank you for your time, and if I seemed a little frustrated, I hope you can understand. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Mr. Stillwell, would you stand for a question?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate you being here, appreciate you being here two weeks ago, the week, two weeks before that, Planning and Zoning Commission, and appreciate your, your frustration, and I apologize for any issues this has caused. But I'm hoping maybe you could give us just a little bit of insight outside of this application. You strike me as an individual who's educated, articulate, pragmatic. What are the things that you would like to have seen done differently, so that it was more transparent for you?
I think that the, I think that, first of all, maybe a part of the confusion is is that it was a complicated petition that was put forward. And these things need to be phrased more, you know, I think more clearly in some respects. That's number one. Number two, I mean, with all due respect to the council, is that, you know, if we aren't going to approve something, then we should deny it, or vice versa. Or if we are not going to do that, and we want to have, we're denying this particular suggestion, or, or, or a petition for this particular use, but we want to keep this open, because we want to consider other uses, and that should have been stated. You know, maybe it was, and I didn't understand it. But when I walked out, I thought, well, that part is over with. And, well, no, not really. And I just think it, it needs to be more clearly stated, is all. Okay? And then second thing is, is that if we're going to allow the petitioner to basically amend his petition, okay, then there needs to be given proper notices. In other words, the petitioner, and I don't fault the, the developer here, or the architect, or the engineering firm, but they need to be, they need to understand that if they're going to make changes, then they need to complete their changes and have those-
Sir, if you could speak into the microphone.
Okay, they need to complete their changes, and have them posted, at least on the city website, a week or two weeks before the hearing, so that the public has reasonable notice. I'm s-
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milam.
Sorry, just to jump in here. So just to clarify, because I agree with you, and there are a lot of times I try to explain things sometimes in a way that people could understand, because before I did this, I wouldn't have understood a word they were talking about up here. So I, I understand where your frustration comes from. What happened a couple weeks ago is, we didn't approve the project, because we asked the developer to go back and remove the apartment buildings and then bring it back. So we did a continuance. So we said, we continue this meeting until the 20th. Hoping, we tried to let all of you know, then we're gonna be coming back on the 20th for this continuance. We couldn't, if we denied it, he would have had to go through a very long process to start over, and that would be unfair to him. So we gave him an opportunity to fix what we didn't like in the application and come back today. The five acres, all he's asking for is that he can build houses on it. R4 is no more than four houses per acre. And those lots are probably the, similar to the ones that you, the ones that you live in are probably R4 or R8. So they're the same size or bigger than the rest of the surrounding area. If that's helpful. Yes. Okay.
If I could, just, just to clarify a couple of things that, I think there's been some confusion, and I'm trying to pull up the couple of things in our code that I think folks are confused about. One is Table 112A-2, which, which does have quite a long list of potential either conditional uses, accessory uses, or permitted uses. And if there's a dash on here, it's a use that's not permitted at all. So yes, there are things besides single-family homes, if I scroll through here, that could potentially be approved on that five-acre piece. So I don't want the impression to come across that it's just gonna be single-family homes. And there may not necessarily be a, you know, in theory, there will be a preliminary plat on that property. But if a single property, anyone wants to come, build one home on five acres of property, that's, that's a scenario in which there could not be another hearing in front of any board or commissioner of the city council. I don't see that happening, but just, just so that's out there. I will also say that Councilman Milam indicated that four homes, it's actually 8,000-square-foot lot is what's allowed in the R4. So you could potentially have more than four on an acre. So I don't, I wanted to make sure that was clear. I apologize for any confusion there was with the memo that I sent out, but I wanted to make sure that, that folks were aware that there's a discrepancy right now with the development agreement allows this R4 parcel, as it currently states, or as it's currently zoned, to have uses that are allowed in the LO zoning district. As, as a planner, I don't, I don't like that, because it's, there's a lot of confusion involved, and that may be part of the reason why folks have decided they don't want to develop the piece of property, because zoning does not match what you can actually do with the property. So in regards to lining those back up, it made sense, and, and discussions with the, the applicant, is you can do one of two things, I think, would make sense. You can ask to rezone that LO and have that be consistent. You can have it do R4, so that the zoning and the uses are consistent. And that was the, that was the reasoning why we put that in the memo, is 11-2A2 is a table that allows for those uses in the R4 zoning district to match what the actual zoning is. So, and that may have been overkill on explanation, but I wanted to at least explain the reasoning why we-
Madam Mayor.
Why we went that direction.
I'm sorry, I think you just made everything more confusing.
Madam-
So I, you know, I, I will tell you that generally, this begins with a neighborhood meeting. And that neighborhood meeting happens within a 300-foot noticing area. What neighbors see at that time is often nothing similar to what is eventually applied, because we hope that the applicant learns from talking to the neighbors what is palatable and what isn't. And so oftentimes, they do go back to the drawing board. I don't know about this case, but I do know what we eventually see, because of the public process that is put in place, that it's oftentimes a total- put in place, that it's oftentimes a totally different application than what was originally envisioned. And, and so I understand your confusion. I've stood where you have, and probably why I got involved with the city is I wanted to have a better understanding of what all that process was. So your voice is important. And many times, it's the citizen voices that do change applications because the developer wants to see approval. Planning and Zoning Commission is a recommending body.
I understand.
They cannot, in this regard, make decisions. They make recommendations to the decision-making body, which is the city council. And at the meeting in May, when they heard this, they did not like the apartments in the same reason, well, most of them didn't, to the same reason the citizens had concerns. And so they said, the first motion was to approve, it failed, but we still needed to take action. And the council at that time was not ready to take action because of some of the comments they heard. And they said, well, why don't we continue this? Allow the applicant to look at what they're proposing and consider something that's a modification of what they've applied. And that is within city council's rights to say, we're not going to totally kill this, but we want to give you another opportunity to bring something else back, considering all the testimony that was heard, that we hope, and I think I even said at the end, I hope you have heard the neighbors and that you will work with them. And I think they worked with the feedback that they heard, and that's what you're seeing today. When we continued it, it was on June 6, I believe, and they continued it because they weren't quite ready to come back with a proposal I think they felt would satisfy what council's feedback was at that public hearing, and to be sensitive to the citizens. So that's why we're here today, is to consider, yes, yet another application, or another version of what they can do. And with the clarification that staff made, when we had planned developments, they were, they were zoned one thing, even though they were a collective of a number of different land uses. And that's, if all of you that were part of the Selway apartment concerned, that was part of the master plan for Loxaw Falls. However, it was all classified under an R4. So this particular development, although it's part of that master plan, it was specifically designated for office. So staff would like to see a cleanup, so that when someone comes in, they'll see the uses intended actually reflected, in case someone does do their research and say, oh, well, that is office, conditional use permit is, is required to consider storage units, and this is R4, which is primarily residential homes. There are other uses allowed, but those are conditional uses that require a more extensive public process. I hope that makes sense to you.
It does. And I would just like to say is that I'm not anti-developer, and I'm not anti-development. I'm well aware that that property is going to be developed. And I also think it's worthwhile for the, for the homeowners to try to work with the developer. They may not get everything they want, but oftentimes, half a loaf is better than no loaf at all. And so I think, you know, the homeowners, and, you know, if need be, the homeowners association, should make an effort before we bring, before, then the matter comes to you guys, to make an effort to see if we can compromise, or if we can come up with a solution that's going to satisfy everybody. So it isn't that I'm anti-development or anything like that. I just get worried when people start saying, here, make this change, but we aren't going to tell you what's going in. You know what I mean? That makes me concerned. And that's, was my, and then, you know, I went on a camping trip this weekend. When I, when I left, I thought, you know, this was not going to come up, that this was just putting the, the storage unit back on the west side of the property, and that was it. I come back from this camping trip, and guess what? Then I started reading this other line, which is like, well, what's up here? What's going on? And I started to review the whole procedure, the process that I, in some length, described. And that's when I started to get frustrated, because I couldn't understand what was going on here, really. I really couldn't, in all good faith, take a position saying I oppose this, because I wasn't sure what I was opposing, to be very honest about it. At the same time, I couldn't take a position of supporting it, because I had no idea what I was supporting.
Well, you know, that's why we show up, too. We want to see what's actually being proposed as well.
I'm sure there's other people that would like to get up here and-
Thank you.
And thank you very much for listening.
Madam Mayor, if I could ask you one more question. So knowing that it's on the west side, seeing some renderings, and having a basic understanding, not a comprehensive understanding of what R4 is, and I might know on R4, often there's projects before us where all the neighbors are begging, please put R4 around us instead. This is a side note. But knowing basically what R4 is, and what those storage units are intended to look like, how do you feel about the project as you've seen it in the last few minutes?
Well, I've seen the project. And to be very honest about it, I'm also a member of the HOA board. And I'm, I think the position of the board at this point in time is that we are not taking a position on the storage unit. And the reason I say that is not, just to give you an ambivalent or equivocal answer, it's because I think there's some homeowners in our development who oppose it, and are very opposed to it. There's others, and you may have just heard from one before me, that say, well, it's fine. You know, it isn't immediately up against the Kelly Creek subdivision. So, you know, as a member of the board, we felt that it was inappropriate for us to take a position, come down one side or the other. Because in a sense, by me saying something, even though I'm appearing as an individual and not as the president of the board, still, that can get kind of confused. You can understand that, because I assume you run into similar circumstances. So, you know, at this point in time, we aren't taking a position on it. Thank you.
Jamie Pullman signed up against and would like to testify.
Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Janie Pullman, 5030 North Goddard Creek Way.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'm, I think some of the confusion with the unified development, I even had to write it down, code, was exactly what some of the council members were surprised when they heard what staff reported about that. So my understanding is that the five acres, I am opposed to the storage unit also, but that the five acres will stay the RD4, whatever it is. But they want to add on top of that, which is not currently there, this unified development code. Is that correct? Which opens it up to more uses. So they're not rezoning it RD4. They want to add unified development code to open up more uses. Is that correct?
No. They're, they would like to clean up what is allowed, and instead of just the office, and have the storage units and the five acres designated as R4.
Okay. So somewhere in there, it said that they had to add the unified development code. And in that code, it allows townhomes, two-family duplexes, which that's what we've just been fighting against, is multiple dwelling homes. But this unified development code is now going to allow it with a conditional permit. Also, I'm not sure if this five acres is included in the PUD that Selway was in. But if it is, then it says multifamily dwellings may be allowed in R4, if it's in, already in a PUD. So I think it's, they're trying to come in the back door, not right now, in the future, to come back before the board, the council, excuse me, and try to get multifamily housing in there. I, I'm hoping that the council will give the south part of the development the same consideration they gave the north part of the development, by not breaking our Loxaw Falls development agreement, leaving it as is, is what I'm hoping. I, too, feel like there's way too much confusion, not only with the residents, but possibly with the council, to not fully understand what they're exactly voting on. I could be wrong, and I apologize for that. I'm, I'm not meaning to be disrespectful. But that's what I feel with some of the questions that, and answers we're getting. I do believe, I just want one more point, please. I do think that the applicant feels like there is not any opposition to the storage unit, because each of us are allowed three minutes to stand up here and talk. And so the first thing we did was go to the, to the multifamily, because that was the most important. But a lot of people are not, are, are opposed to the storage unit also. When I was looking at those pictures, I'm sorry, but it looked like a prison to me. Right in our beautiful development, coming into our restaurants and all the shopping, I'm asking you to please disapprove the whole application.
Thank you.
Dan Fisher signed up against and would like to testify.
Good evening.
Good evening. Dan Fisher, 2382 West Avgar Creek Drive.
Thank you.
In the, the UDC, some of the uses with an A, which I assume means approved, within that UDC, or within that, is, am I using the correct lingo? The correct use table. So in that with an A would be a restaurant, a storage facility, storage facility self-service, wireless communications, and then a conditional use permit. There's all kinds of uses. I think we need to go right back to our development agreement. And I think even more importantly, we need to go right back to the comprehensive plan that was developed by the city of Meridian. This is your plan. This is our plan. The plan says light office. There's, there's plenty of great light offices that you see around town, and it's beautiful. There's dentist's office, orthodontist's office, CPAs. It's great. And those are great neighbors. I mean, I'm in the commercial real estate, in the banking world. I know that light office makes a great neighbor. I also like the look of it. It's a lot more appealing to me than seeing storage units. I agree with Janie. It looks a lot like a prison. And I am very much opposed to the open-ended use of the, the east five-acre parcel. So I think it would be great to just clear up the confusion. I think a lot of the confusion was having two, two uses, two, really, two applications in one big chunk, just kind of thrown at everyone, yourselves included. I think it would be best to just clean the slate and stick with the comprehensive plan of the city of Meridian, and put light office in that property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, maybe I could give just a quick primer on how zoning works in general. Is that all right?
Yes.
Zoning districts, just about everywhere, it's not just Meridian, work pretty much this way. There are a range of uses that are allowed in them. A good part of the city of Meridian is zoned R4. A good part of that, I don't have the exact percentage, but quite a bit of that acreage is currently undeveloped. Now, the way zoning districts work is that you have a range of these uses. They either are allowed outright, or they are conditional uses, or those uses are prohibited. The idea behind the way the zoning district has been designed, and all, we try to do this with all of our zoning districts, is to only allow those uses as permitted uses, which are about the same intensity as the R4 residential that you'd expect to have there, is that lower-density residential. Anything that steps up to a little higher intensity would then have to be a conditional use, and therefore would require an approval process. So it's really a good, rather than being perhaps open-ended, and certainly I can see the arguments about changing a development order, a development agreement, but a good part of the city is in the same condition as this, as this eastern piece of property, if, you know, being zoned R4. So it's really not that open-ended. The idea is to be harmonious with other similar uses. Just, just thought I'd throw out that explanation. And, and Mayor, I think you're probably going to say that I just confuse things more, so.
I didn't have to say it.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Where Josh has highlighted this, maybe you could break down for us what permitted accessory, conditional-
Love to.
Maybe that'll make it worse. I don't know.
Permitted uses are those, as Bruce mentioned, that you can come and obtain a permit for, and move forward on without any other hearings involved. An accessory would be something that you could only have, and can only be a small portion of that use. So for instance, we, this may be a poor example, because it doesn't apply specifically to this, but in some cases, self-storage facilities are considered an accessory use if they are associated with an apartment complex. You can't have them stand alone, but those types of uses would be potentially allowed as part of that development for those tenants only. Conditional use, as is described, as Bruce described, requires a hearing, and that would be certain things. Just about every zoning has conditional uses, and those typically go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then those that have a dash, as indicated here, are those that are not permitted in that zone. So A does not mean approved. A means it's an accessory to another type of business, that is either approved, or is a conditional use, additionally approved. Does that make sense?
And the conditional use permits generally are heard at planning and zoning unless they are accompanied by another application.
That's correct. And then just one more thing. You see these P slash C here. In those cases, there are specific use standards, or there's special requirements we have for those specific types of uses. And if they can meet certain standards, it's permitted. If they can't, it's a conditional use. And that just depends on that type of use, what those conditions are, or special requirements.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Okay, we're doing good. Okay, so Josh, then maybe if you could scan down, because so far on what's visible right there, the only two that they could do without needing additional permission would be single-family dwelling, I think is what I said, yeah, dwelling single-family, a park, and then-
You're correct. There are very limited uses-
That's it.
...in the residential zones, and that's by design.
Or public utility.
Madam Mayor, if I could also add, we currently have 1,773 acres of R4 zoned land within the city limits, which is vacant, undeveloped. So I don't believe that this is an open-ended zoning district at all. In fact, it's quite, compared to many other zoning districts we have in the city, it's, it's quite restricted. But we, if there's concern about the eastern piece being zoned R4, we need, would need to be concerned similarly about a good chunk of the city. It's a lot of land. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Porcher.
Here's how, here's the issue, and that's not the issue. Regardless of how it's zoned, the issue today, before the meeting started, is that parcel has LO uses. You can zone it pink, blue, 412, who cares? It can be used today, and the prior agreement was light office, right or wrong. It's, can be used today, and the prior agreement was light office, right or wrong? That's the ability, what can or can't be developed. So, it's, the request is, should that use be changed as part of this, to those listed in R4?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton, I agree completely with you on that. I just, there was a sense that perhaps R4 was overly permissive in and of itself, and that's, that's all I was addressing.
And Madam Mayor, what I hear the public, in, in what they've said and what they've read, is, prior agreement, right or wrong, the terms of the deal, is that parcel is LO. What's, can be done in LO is what can be done there, don't change that. And if we were to make a change, effectively, if not literally rezoning, to allow our, our four uses, we'd be changing today what can go on that property. And, and that might limit the public to have a future ability to have input on it, for example, the single-family home, which, as of right now, could never go on that property, absent a rezone to R4, or that change. So, I, I think I understand where the public's coming from, is regardless of, it's not being rezoned, we want you to maintain that basket of uses that exist within the LO restriction in the development agreement, which is unfortunately inconsistent with its technical zoning, but nonetheless, that's the restriction that exists on the property.
And, and that, and I agree, the, the development agreement is the crux of, I think, the concern, didn't want anything about R4, though, in particular, to be, uh, to be a distraction from that discussion.
Josh, could you pull up the UDC and show council the allowed uses under office?
Love to. So, same scenario, C is conditional use, dash is not permitted, P is permitted, and then you see your, sometimes there's A slash C, which is kind of that same thing, you'd be allowed, it's an accessory under certain conditions, and a conditional use permit under others.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Borton.
As, as we do this, I heard the applicant say, while it would be preferred to remove that limitation that exists only in the development agreement, and restore it to the uses consistent with its current zoning of R4, that request is not make or break on this application. And if the development agreement provision that limits the use to LO uses were to remain, that's acceptable to the applicant, and it wouldn't necessarily prevent the storage unit component from proceeding today. That's what I heard the applicant say. So, not to say this is academic, but, a little bit it might be. I guess that's not a question, that's just a comment.
Okay, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Penny Fisher signed up against with no indication of testimony.
Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Penny Fisher, I live at 2382 West Aggar Creek Drive.
Thank you.
What I wanted to say too was, I agree with Sister, Ms. Pullman and my husband, Dan Fisher. Even rezoning it, it still goes against the Loxa Falls Agreement, it would be completely gone at this point. I had someone reach to me and ask, one of the questions they want to know is, how can one parcel have two ratings and be rezoned two different ways? I don't know the answer to that, and that was something they had a question for. But they do feel with the CC and the R4, Loxa Falls Agreement again would be gone. They also feel that we shouldn't be here because, we were told, the applicant said we gave ROK after planning and zoning opted to deny the whole project. We didn't meet with anyone after 3:30, so, we never agreed to it, we didn't say one way or the other. Yes, a lot of the, the opposition was against the multi-dwelling, but I am looking at this too, what little I do know, I mean, I, the light office, it does, it's LO, but, again, this does say with a conditional permit. It does say, single-family attached, dwelling, single-family detached, dwelling townhouse, dwelling family duplex, amongst other things. So, how, if it is changed, how is that not guaranteed? And why would, did we go through all this to get it denied, just to have it, in the future, be able to? Is there something you can do now to guarantee that townhouses, two-family duplexes are not going to be on that property? And that's a question that I have for you guys to, to answer and address today, before you make your decision to approve or deny.
Thank you. We will answer those as we get towards the end of public testimony.
Brienne Jones signed up against with no indication of testimony.
Hello.
Hi, Brienne Jones, 2093 West Aggar Creek Drive in Meridian.
Thank you.
Um, I appreciated opening the meeting with reinforcing that the council is here to advocate for the comprehensive plan that is in place, and upholding the timeline that was also set for the original plan. I'm referring to the development plan for the Loxa Falls, and also that the main goal is to advocate, or to find the best outcome for the community. We live very close to where the storage units would be, and we have been super confused, like everybody here. I appreciate you having compassion for the everyday person, even after explaining it, it's still, with further explanation, and my waters are getting even more muddy. So, when these things happen, I think that we should just go back to the original agreement. That's really the only leg that the residents have to stand on. If you take that away from us, and we rezone it, we don't have anything at that point. We're agreeing to, or you're agreeing to, let the conditional, uh, things come, come back potentially, which, like the previous lady said, that could be things that we are really fighting against here. So, I do want to go on the record saying that I disapprove, I want to deny the entire project, just because it goes against the original agreement that was put into place, and I hope that we can trust our council, also because there are still some members on the council that made that original plan, that we can rely on, on the trust to keep that in place. Thanks.
Thank you.
Jonathan Forsyth signed up against and does not wish to testify. Will Davis signed up against with no indication of testimony.
Hi, my name is Will Davis, reside at 2371 West Aggar Creek Drive.
Thank you.
Appreciate the chance to be here, this has been a grand philosophical discussion about office, residential, et cetera, et cetera. Unfortunately, that's not the time to make that philosophical discussion, if you're going to make a decision this evening, because you can have a great philosophical discussion about it, which should take place between the mayor and the council, and the Planning and Zoning Commission, and members of the community, but the action tonight could affect the lives of those people that live in this area for a long time, and that's not probably the most appropriate place to have that happen. If we want to have a philosophical discussion about office, and storage units, and townhomes, et cetera, et cetera, then the only choice is to deny this tonight, and have that discussion, and then say, this is what we came up with. There was a lot of discussion on the 23rd meeting about the Loxa Falls Agreement, and then it came up, but that was 15 years ago, but this council adopted the current comprehensive plan in October of 2016. It's not like this land is sat vacant for years and years and years, waiting for a council to make a decision and say, this is what's going to be here. That was done in 2016. Your first proposal comes that's against that, and we're saying, oh, this is a great thing, we're going to take some vacant land out of the community, and we're going to use it for something. That's the philosophical discussion, what's the best use for this land, but it's not, apparently needs, it's, it's not something that needs to be made tonight, if we're talking a long-term use. I sent an email to the council, uh, prior to the other meeting, and I'll just close with, with what I closed with that in. And I base that, for eight years, I sat in the council member's seat, for 12 years, I sat in the mayor's seat in a community in other state, another time period, et such, but, I quoted what I was attributed to Dwight Eisenhower when he was president, "The important things are seldom urgent, urgent things are seldom important. If we need to take time, we need to take time." I understand your concern when you made the motion before, the conversation about the money and time and effort that the developer has in these things, that's their cost of doing business. They have to factor that stuff in. But, what you're doing now could affect the lives of the people that live here for the next 10, 15, 20 years. And I hope you'll take that into consideration as you make a decision on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael, and I apologize, Michael, I'm not sure how to pronounce your last name, Catriando, Catianda?
California.
Pretty close. Signed up against and would like to testify.
I'm Michael Caliendo, I live at 2582 West Divide Creek Street in Meridian.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members, for letting me speak. I, uh, found it very ironic that I ran away from Rockland in Roseville, California, because of the massive expansion and growth that ran me out of there. We, uh, grew up as kids on bike trails, and ponds, and oak trees, and I watched within 15 to 20 years, an entire community disappear. That was a rural community, into one big suburbia of tilt-ups, strip malls, malls, storage facilities, warehouses, and industrial facilities, that kind of all hodgepodge into this one big mix, that turned everything into a standstill from stoplight to stoplight, and everything was out of control. And when I got a job offer here in Idaho, I thought this was a new opportunity. I moved in the middle of potato fields, corn, feed corn, and onion fields, to get away from what I had experienced in California, and I moved here and made my investment in my future in my home, based on an agreement. And that's just it, it's an agreement. An agreement is a contract. And, a contract shouldn't be broken unless there's just compensation to those that are potentially going to suffer irreparable harm, which I think this is putting a big prison facility, looking prison facility, um, which we already have three within a mile, right in our backyards, is going to decrease the value of our homes, and we're not being compensated for that. For that, I'm deathly opposed to this facility. I like the idea of R4, and I love the idea of the office, light office use, because, where do I go for, when I have my knee replaced to a physical therapy? Right there, I go to the physical therapy place, right across from Walmart, right in my backyard, because I like doing business with neighbors. Light office is great, there'll be dentists, there'll be CPAs, I'm still using my California CPA, because I can't find a decent CPA around here that wants to do business with me. I've only gone to one, though, so, we had some differences. But, I would like a, a new CPA, a dentist that's close, a doctor that's close, and some light office would be very, very nice to have. We have, well, probably 200, 300 houses within that facility, and I understand the gentleman made this investment 15 years ago, but I made my investment 10 years ago, and I'm just starting to see some of the dollars come back, and I'm breaking, about breaking even on my home right now. To start throwing more traffic, and more tilt-ups, and more storage facilities up, is not going to increase the value of my home. I want to, love to see that neighborhood stay what it is, and that's a family, community, light office use, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Alator signed up for, and would like to testify.
I'll talk at the end.
John Carpenter signed up for with no indication of testimony.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
John Carpenter, I'm at 332 North Broadmore in Nampa, I'm with TO Engineers, I'll be real brief.
Can you pull that a little closer? Thank you.
How's that?
That's better.
Great. At the last meeting, we had a pretty direct, um, answer from council and the neighbors that we didn't want to have multifamily. Uh, I requested that we pulled multifamily, uh, that was discussed, and that's what, exactly what we did. So, tonight, we're here simply just with storage units. 12 acres total on the property, seven acres of storage units. The five acres, we tried to decide what to do with that five acres, and that's why it took a little time, went back and forth with staff. Really, there's two options, um, you want to try to go with the light office, or you want to go residential. Really, if you look through code, there's a lot more options in, in the light office. Residential's pretty cut and dry. So, to me and others, it would, it seemed there'd be less opposition with the residential to R4. If there is a desire by council and the neighbors to have light office, by all means, we'll take it. The residential developer that had the nice, um, units, is off to another piece of property in Meridian, I'm sure we'll see him again. Those, those are a very nice product, but he is, he's not, he's not interested in this project anymore. So, there's only Brian Porter sitting back here, um, that's interested in the storage units, and that's it. So, the five acres, um, there's not a plan for it. The five acres is to be developed in the future. It's at a value that it won't come in at one lot. At R4, even though it is 8,000 square foot per lot, you can never get greater than four units to the acre, time you take out the roads and everything, so usually you're three and a half, something like that. So, it's pretty safe, that's the only reason we stuck it on there, we don't have any intentions other than, it's a little less complicated. If the folks want to stay with the PUD that was originally approved, that is fine, the developer for the storage units is, is open either way. Just a couple other points, the comprehensive plan, as it's shown today, actually shows this property as two uses. One is multifamily, if you look at it, I don't know if you can bring it up, Josh? One, one of the things that I would ask, that we pay attention to in the future, is, if we have development agreements that have very clear, uh, land uses, they should match the comprehensive plan. The master plan for Loxaw had light office up on Chindon, and light office on McMillan. If you remember, it was a developer that did pretty much nothing but residential. My guess is, he really didn't know what was, what was going to happen down there. That ground has sat vacant for 15 years. The ground on Chindon has developed.
Josh, you want to...
No, we're 100% sure what we're at, what we're looking for.
I'm looking for the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Yeah, it was just talked about that we should follow a comprehensive plan, I just wanted to point out the fact that there's actually multifamily shown on, on the city of Meridian's comprehensive plan, and light office. I'll keep talking. So, really, I don't, I don't know if I answered it before, but I wanted to be clear, we made a decision on R4, just because we thought it'd be easier for the neighbors. If somebody wants light office, that is fine, there's no, no issue either way between the two of them.
With me just a second.
Mr. Carpenter, are you asking for the land use plan map, or for the comprehensive plan text?
Comprehensive plan map.
Thank you.
And when was the map last updated?
It's updated, Madam Mayor, every time we have a change to it, so, I'd have to look back at the previous agenda, but, but every time, uh, the, uh, the plan is amended, usually as a result of an annexation.
And I mean, in terms of holistically?
Madam Mayor, it would, would have been about, um, four years ago.
So, Josh has it up on the screen right now, and orange is multifamily, and you can see that it encroaches into that property, probably, I don't know, 25%, and then the purple is light office. So, our comprehensive plan that we have for this area has, has both of those. So, our comprehensive plan that we have for this area has both of those. It's dated March 2017. I don't know if that was actually when it was put in place, but this is subsequent to that development agreement. So, we are here asking for approval on the, on the storage units with that CC, with the conditional use permit. And we're asking for either R4 or light office on the 5 acres. We're not trying to backdoor anybody. If there's a sense of that, that is not the case, we do not have a plan for that 5 acres. Wish we did, but that, that, that plan will come later. As, as the storage units go in and that 5 acres, somebody comes up with the, with the plan that makes sense for it, a preliminary plat will come before you.
Counsel, any questions?
Let me make sure I hit all the neighbors' comments.
Well, your time is up, so.
All right. I will sit down. Thank you very much.
I guess I do have a question. I know some of the concern, both during this hearing and at the last one, is traffic. I see you're not putting it on Goddard. I'm sure that there's great appreciation to that. You have a secondary entrance or exit into the apartments that eventually could get that way, but it doesn't look all that convenient. What is the difference? There wasn't a traffic study, but what is the difference between traffic generated with a storage unit versus traffic generated with light office?
There actually was a traffic study.
Was there?
We did go through that exercise. We did it, we did it after the fact. Storage units. That's the, what, trips per day?
Yep.
So, and the number on the right is for what we had proposed on, on 5 acres. Yeah. So, just to kind of give you a comparison, there, as we had it before with the apartments, 5 acres, there was almost 500 trips per day coming out of that 500, or, excuse me, the 5, 5 acres. On the storage side, out of the 7 acres, it was a little over 200. The big difference is the timing for those, Mayor, is they don't, they don't hit the peak. So, when everybody's leaving to go to work in the morning, people aren't going to the storage units. They're coming kind of sporadically through the day. The storage units are actually really, they're, they're nice to blend in with, with neighborhoods because they don't, they don't clash traffic-wise. But we do have a traffic study that was, that was provided.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it. Thank you. I didn't see it in the original, but I'll find it.
You know what it was. It's confusing. It wasn't a requirement from ACHD. They came out and said, we don't need to do one. Because the neighbors had questions, and planning alone needed, we hired a traffic engineer and did prepare that study. So, as the neighbor said, and you're aware, there has been a lot of meetings. I've been to three neighborhood meetings myself, but a lot of back and forth. But the traffic was one of those items. So, hopefully, we've, we've addressed it. We are taking everything out to McMillan, and that's how we had it previously. ACHD doesn't, doesn't want multiple access points out on McMillan. That's kind of been a problem. There's a little bit of a clash on, you know, what you do with, with trips. But ACHD, if there was residential like we had it, they're the ones that wanted us going out to Apgar.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavener.
John, we've heard from some of the neighbors tonight, and I think the council's received quite a bit of correspondence that have made some claims that developer, developers' representative have purported that the neighbors are in favor of, of this project, and many of them are here saying they're not. Can you give me a sense on where that's coming from? And it just, it helps us kind of, you know, dig through the mud on, on that particular issue where we were told maybe, where people believed that the camp, or that the, the neighbors are in support, but maybe they're not. I'm just hoping you might be able to, to give me, shine a little light on that.
I'll try to shine a little light on it. It's probably going to be a little bit. I can't speak for the neighbors. Like I said earlier, I've been to three neighborhood meetings. We've spent time with some of the board members on the HOA, trying to negotiate some sort of solution, especially when we had the multifamily. We looked at switching the location, multifamily on the west side and storage units, just trying to deal with that traffic. Always, the issue was the multifamily. Never, never was it a concern before tonight with, with the storage units. So, I, it, it just hasn't come up before.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Cheryl Marion signed up against and does not wish to testify. And that, Madam Mayor, concludes all the signups.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to provide testimony that hasn't?
Is it possible to say one more thing?
Janie Pullman, 5030 North Goddard Creek Way. I don't even know if this will answer your question, but on May 23, I brought a form of a traffic study that Ada County had just done.
I found it.
A subsequent to, anyway, it's 3,300 trips per average day through the intersection of Goddard Creek Way and McMillan, if that was what you were asking.
Thank you.
That's right. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
To that point, and if the applicant's coming next, he can correct me, but on the, on the traffic count, there was, because we talked about the distinction between light office and residential and, and storage units, and the notes from, it's a May 19 traffic study you guys did, that had the light office trips on full build-out of 1,340 daily trips. The ACHD report, or ACHD report had 365 trips for the storage units. And the residential component was less than the 1,340, but the ACHD figures were much, much lower than the existing light office use. So, it's, looking at traffic by itself, the storage units generate far less traffic than a light office use. This is how I read the traffic study in the ACHD report. But when you came back up, you reminded me also that you sent, ma'am, an email in, on early June, asking about the continuation. And I think other developer or other citizens did as well, asking, at the very least, if there was a continuation from the June 6 meeting to today, to at least address it. I know the applicant has an opportunity to speak at the end, to at least provide the public some context as to what happened from May 23 to June 6 that necessitated not being ready or whatever took place to then continue it to today, because we had a lot of members of the public, and, and some were upset, some were concerned, and I think they were all, at the very least, entitled to an explanation as to what was going on behind the scenes to warrant that continuance to today. So, I'm glad you came back up, because I remember that.
If there's no further testimony, I'll ask the applicant to come. There were a couple of questions that were also asked, and Mr. Neri, do you want to address those?
There were three that I took notes of. One was, how can they split this into two zones? And subdivision process in the code allows that, for one parcel to be split into multiple parcels that could have different zones on them. Planning has to concur that it meets the comprehensive plan, the future land use map, and the designations that the city has wanted, and is consistent with that. And as Bruce said about zoning, again, you're looking at uses and whether conditional or permitted uses are allowed. So, that's perfectly legal process of subdividing property to create different zones. One was a question of, could the council do anything to guarantee that the future use of that property wouldn't be something that people don't want today? And the answer to that is no. This council can, can do whatever it likes to do to restrict this property through the legal processes like the development agreement. You can limit what they can do, but the law allows them always to ask a future council, which is why we're here. The previous council, under a different ordinance that doesn't exist anymore, created this development agreement and put some restriction of uses. But there's no way in the law that they can make it preventable from anybody ever asking to change it. So, the ability to have a hearing and have the public participate and have that discussion is always going to exist unless the city were to purchase the property. The last one was, there was a question about compensation in relation to other properties. So, in the law in Idaho, development agreements are, are agreements and contracts between the city and the property owner of that property. It is not an agreement of, of a contract with anybody else. Yes, it's something that the public can read and rely upon, but with the understanding that it can be changed, and legally, that's allowed to be done. And there's no compensation in Idaho or any other state that I'm aware of, that changing those agreements requires compensation. So, those three things were the questions I thought were more legal-oriented that I could answer, and if there was something else I missed, certainly, please tell me. But those are the three that I took notes on.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I had a fourth that was tied to it, and it was, the question was asked as to how we can do that, and I, I heard it to also ask why. The how, there's a boring legal technical answer that makes it permissible, but the why? Why would we allow property to be zoned X, but the uses are Y? It's confusing to the public and everyone else. Not a question to maybe answer today. It's a great question. I don't recall the last time I've ever seen that happen. And so, the how makes sense, but the why, would we allow that, in light of the confusion it can cause, is something I guess we can visit and try to avoid in the future, because it's confusing at best.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of council, Councilman Burton, I think the answer is, as elected officials, you always have control of the why. The why is the discretion that this council has in regards to how land develops in the city and what makes sense. I think Councilman Palmer brought up at the original one, if land sits vacant for a long time, can a council consider, in their discretion, to allow that change? Yes, that is totally within your discretion to do. So, yeah, I usually have to answer the why, or the how, and you get to answer the why.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, council members, thank you very much for your time again this evening. I'd just like to tie into the, the change that we're requesting here. As far as the entire parcel, we're really in a difficult spot with this piece of property. And it's been something that's challenged us since the beginning. Like John brought up, the upper portion of the site has a use for multifamily. And, you know, looking at our exhibit here, coming down well past that second building into the site, that's all supposed to be multifamily. And I think we understand very clearly that the neighborhood does not want more of that multifamily housing. And when we first looked at this project, one of the options we considered was taking that aggregate amount of land for multifamily, sticking it to the east or the west, and just reconfiguring those areas. But I don't think that's the right fit, based on all the testimony we've heard from the community. And so, no matter what we do on this property, there has to be some amendment. There has to be some change in order to make use of the land, or we condemn it in perpetuity to be vacant. And I don't think that's in the best interest of Meridian either. To address the, the issue of why we didn't meet two weeks ago, after, and actually, I think also, Commissioner Cavener, your, your question about the community, our very first community meeting, which happened last year, a fall of last year, I heard very clearly, at that point, we just had the storage facilities. We, we didn't know what we were going to do with that 5-acre parcel. And several of the neighbors who came out tonight to testify against our storage facility, they were very excited about the prospect of storage going in there. In fact, one of, one of the very active members of the community who testified tonight told me very specifically, "Storage makes good neighbors." And as recently as our last meeting, or council meeting, we met with several of the neighbors in the, the foyer out here. I talked with members of the HOA board, vocal members of the community, and once again, they reiterated to us that we don't have any issue with the storage. We don't like the housing. And then tonight, that target's moved, and now we're hearing that they don't like the storage either. And I'm not sure what changed over the last month. Maybe it's the feeling of being jilted from the last council meeting, I'm not sure. But it, it does take me by surprise, because the feedback I've received consistently as the architect for the storage facility was that they were in favor of it. As to the last council meeting, we were trying to find a solution that would, once and for all, put us to rest this question of that 5-acre parcel. We were working with city staff and with ACHD to try to come to a compromise to allow us to lock down that eastern corridor, the corner, and prohibit any future access off of Goddard Creek or Apgar Way. And unfortunately, and as of last, two weeks ago, there was still a light at the end of the tunnel that we might be able to get that resolved, but we weren't able to do that. ACHD has very clearly stated that they would not support that. And so, the only way we can move forward with developing the storage facility at this point would be to put it on the western portion of the parcel and hope at some point, something shifts or changes, or, or, you know, there's a use that can be found for that 5 acres on the east. But for right now, that's, we, we don't, we don't know how that's going to be developed. And when we started this whole process, we weren't sure what we were going to do with that 5 acres, and we've come full circle a year later, back to not knowing what to do with that 5 acres. I did want to address the architecture as well of the buildings. We have had several community meetings and feedback from staff. Originally, our, our storage facility, at our very first community meeting, when the neighbors liked the idea of storage, but the feedback we heard was, it looked too industrial. And our original design was more of a traditional storage facility look. And so, we, we listened to the community, and we revised our elevations. We added more colors, more texture, more undulation, you know, ins and outs of the site, changing vertical planes, adding some traditional roof shapes to tie in to the rest of the community. So, we, we've tried to address that. You know, if, if there's still a sense that we can go further, or we need to do something to adjust it or tweak it, you know, hopefully, that maybe is a condition of approval, something we can work with staff to, to deal with. And then the last point I wanted to make had to do with the issue of marketability and why a storage facility. Based on our market research, we're not showing three storage facilities within a mile, and maybe we're missing something. I know of one that's three miles away, which I believe is Citadel. There's another one that's existing that's two miles away, and there's one currently under construction that's a mile from our project site. But even with that, by California standards, that's very dense for storage. But for Idaho, there's definitely a market need, and we wouldn't be working on this for a year to try to get this through if there wasn't a need. And we see the need in the community, and we're trying to fill it. You know, if, if it's not us putting in a storage facility here, you're going to have an application very soon with another developer seeking to put a storage facility in this region. It, there's a need. The, the two storage facilities, facilities that are existing within the three-mile radius are full to capacity. The one that's under construction is already selling, pre-selling, and we anticipate an equal demand, we're hoping for an equal demand on our project. Oh, and then, and then along those lines, one other thing that we've, we actually have heard through this entire process and every other place we do storage facilities, is there's this misconception that storage facilities bring down property values. Our team has been doing storage facilities for a long time, and we haven't seen evidence of that. If there is evidence that storage facilities are bringing down property values, that's something we definitely would want to know about, so we can address those issues and, and make our facilities better. That's not, you know, we're not trying to bring down this neighborhood with our project. I believe I addressed any, everything. If, if there's any other questions I missed, I'm available to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
I have none, Mayor.
No? No questions?
Thank you, Mayor.
Counsel, it's in your hands now for discussion. Do you want to discuss before your close public hearing or close public hearing?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I'll throw out comments onto one of the issues, and it goes to what I mentioned earlier, and the development agreement provision that limits the use of the, I guess, the eastern parcel, parcel 2, to LL uses in the R4 zone.
parcel, parcel two, to LO uses in the R4 zone. In light of everything we've heard and read and seen in the applicant's comments, that would be a change I wouldn't be willing to make at this time. I'd leave the agreement as agreed and as existing between the property and surrounding property owners that restrict that use to that parcel to the LO uses. Understanding the applicant bring, and can bring an independent application at a future time to amend it with a particular plan that shows a particular R4 use, a future council can address it. But for now, I would leave that provision as is.
Who's going to blink first?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I agree to a degree with Councilman Burton, but I, I don't see any reason to change it from LO for the whole 12.5 acres. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I've been sitting here since 1:00. I, I move that we close the public hearing on H-2017-0007.
Second. I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll make a motion, but I move that we deny H-2017-0007 and leave it in the existing zoning as is.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to deny the application in front of you. Any discussion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Milam?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
No.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
No.
Councilmember Burton?
No.
Councilmember Bird?
Aye.
Wow, you guys are awesome. Mr. Palmer.
Well, I guess you still have your vote, so.
I, I do.
Madam Mayor, you may just want to explain what's going on, in case people are wondering.
I think they all know that there is a tie, and I am the tiebreaker. There is a tie, and the mayor breaks ties. And this would be the first time I have actually exercised that opportunity to break a tie, because usually I say, "You need to have a majority," because this is something that I think that people have to agree. This will not be the time I exercise my right to vote. So, you're at a stalemate.
So, does that mean it's just still before us? Essentially, it's a...
It's a failure.
Or it's a...
It fails.
It didn't pass.
Okay. Can we... Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
In light of some of the testimony we've heard tonight about the confusion of the process, would you mind sharing to the audience what just occurred? Because I understood what you were saying, but I want to make sure that everyone here in the audience has the opportunity to understand that as well.
I, I think I, I did try to explain that I haven't broken a tie, because I felt that council should have a majority, one way or the other. I also feel that there wasn't any discussion, so I don't have any idea why some of you voted yes and some of you voted no. And maybe if there were more discussion from the council, that it may not have tied. So, there you have it.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
And while there was quite a bit of delay before the, before Councilman Bird did go ahead and close the public hearing, there wasn't a long delay before he called for the question. So, if, if it's done, it's done, or if you could still vote no on the motion, then there could still be an opportunity for discussion with a new motion.
Yep.
Or if you're done, it's, I guess it's done.
She's not voting, it's back open. Go for it.
There is no motion at this point. Mr. Nary.
Just maybe for the record's sake and to make it clear, I think what Councilmember Palmer's asking, the mayor is, has the ability to break the ties, she's not obligated to do that. The mayor opted not to do that, therefore, the motion ties and therefore fails. So, there is no motion before the council at the moment on whether to approve, deny, or modify, or remand, or anything. So, by, by the mayor declaring not to vote to break that tie, then the motion does fail.
Mr. Madam Mayor.
And I would imagine it doesn't surprise you, because I haven't tried breaking a tie, so.
Madam Mayor, so then, just the motion fails, just as if you had voted no. Oh, so it's still before us, open for discussion. Okay, I thought you were saying it was...
We haven't decided.
That killed it, without killing it.
It's the motion.
Then in that case, if I may, and I plan on a little bit of discussion after the motion, I move we, now we're on my agenda, I move we approve H-2017-0007, with the only exception being that the R4 stays LO. If I get a second, I got...
Second. Yeah, I have a motion in a second to approve the rezone to allow for the storage unit and to keep the five acres in LO.
Right.
Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, for, for the record's sake, Madam Member, Councilmember Palmer, there's a memo that's attached from planning that has provisions, that I think the only provision, and Josh can correct me, is there's one that says to be added, lot two shall only develop with those uses allowed in the R4 zoning district. By your motion, you're saying in the LO zoning district should be inserted. And I think everything else is related to the storage units. Did I miss that, Josh? All the other changes to the development agreement are...
Yeah, all of those other conditions are related to the multifamily portion. So, those are the ones that need to be, yeah, removed, correct.
Okay. So, if that was your intent, then that would be the only suggestion, I add this memo, pursuant to this memo, and then changing that one sentence in number one.
Exactly that. If Councilmember Little Roberts agrees to. Then for discussion, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, counsel, I wish that this rendering that we're looking at right now had more than just the outlines of the trees. There were several comments made that it looks like a prison, and I can picture that with invisible trees. The, I, I feel like their landscaping plan, because we, we look at a lot of overhead 2D landscaping plans, and then we see them in reality. And so, I'm able to picture what the, the end result will be. Whereas, I can imagine, just looking at this, you go, "Yeah, that thing does look like a prison." And so, I, while I understand that, I, I feel like that's not how it's going to end up feeling, that, we, we see a lot of storage units, some that were built decades ago, that look incredibly far different than ones that have been built in the last five or six years. They are obviously storage units, but they don't look anything like they used to. They're much more fitting with the environments around them, due to all the landscaping and the undulations, I think was the word that was used before, and, and differences in the architecture, a lot of times that we are requiring in residential homes that back up to arterial roads. I feel like with all of the meetings that we've gone through, to get to this point, the changes that have been made have gone a lot in the ways that the residents have requested. One of them did mention that they were fine with, with, as long as it gets built as it appears, because of the changes that were made, that, that do fit a lot more with the colors and the styles of the homes. Getting away from the multifamily, understanding the, the traffic issues, that they're going to be far less than they would be with, if it was, you know, a bunch of dentist offices and whatnot on this other seven acres, you're still going to have that, quite possibly, on the other five acres. But between the traffic, the, the architectural setup that they've got, this fits, this makes sense, and they've gone a long ways to fit what many of the neighbors have asked for. And so, with that, I hope for an extra yes vote.
Madam Mayor. Ms. Little Roberts.
I concur with Councilwoman Palmer. It seems like with all of this process that we've gone through, that this really does address the vast majority of the concerns, and that the multifamily was really the issue. And I think that the developer has gone out of his way to try to take into consideration what the neighbors have wanted, and things that, you know, we really do have, have a balance struck here, and that's really what we aim for. Both sides of the fence have rights, and we've really tried to take that into, or we are trying to take that into consideration. But over the course, and rereading a lot of it today, or this morning, before we started meeting at 1:00, trying to reread the testimonies as we've gone on, and the vast majority seemed like the multifamily was definitely the issue, and, and we've dealt with that. And I think this is a really good compromise.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Since the request is for more conversation, I'm happy to provide some from a different perspective. I, I agree with Councilmember Palmer and Councilwoman Roberts that this has been a long process, but I'd share a, a different perspective, one from that of our, our citizens. And I agree with both of you. I applaud the developer for trying to accommodate, make changes, and I applaud our staff. And the process works, because it allows the developer the flexibility to accommodate and make changes. That said, at every one of those opportunities, there was an ample chance, or an ample opportunity for the homeowners to support this project, or a homeowners' association even, to come and say, "We support this project." And at every turn, there's been silence on that end, which again, leads me to believe that all those residents that are over there are best-case neutral with the project. And that's where, for me, it gets to the element of modifying the DA. And I, the applicant spoke about that storage units make the best neighbors. I concur. I think storage, I would much rather have a storage unit next to me than a retail store or drive-through, or a handful of other, other places. And the reason why we have so many storage units is because we've got neighborhoods where we don't want boats and RVs parked on our streets, we want them put away someplace, and we don't necessarily build homes to accommodate that. So, storage units are high in demand. I get that. Great project. But to me, we have yet to hear a single voice from our citizens speak out in support of this project. It's hard for me to now be supportive, recognizing that three weeks ago, I was one of the two votes that was in support of, of passing this application as is. But the testimony that I have heard, both in email and in here tonight, about that particular element of the DA has resonated with me. And I have yet to hear a compelling reason from, from anyone as to why we need to change that, and I've yet to hear any support from this project. So, I appreciate the, the motion, appreciate the second, but I am not in a position where I am prepared this evening to change my vote.
Yeah, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
No.
Councilmember Milam?
No.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bird?
No.
Well, it looks like I'm going to have to vote. And I will vote aye. And I will tell you why. Is, I didn't hear support of it tonight, but I did hear support of the storage units at our last hearing. And this mitigates the concern of traffic. It does not send the traffic through the neighborhood or out onto their entrance, which was the, the major concern. Puts in sidewalks along the entire length. It, it's up against multifamily residential, which has a great transition from the single family. And I think it maintains the, the LO that has been asked to be maintained. So, I think there was a compromise in, in this application, and it does meet the intent of the, the light office. So, I, I hope that the citizens that came here tonight and that have been coming to our council meetings and planning and zoning, see that this is a process, and that your voices do change things. And I, I know as, I have gone through the process too, where you kind of hope for what you would like, that sometimes saying we helped mitigate the concerns doesn't quite go far enough. But the process worked. And I, I guess I'll end it with that. Okay. Our next item on the agenda, item, item 9B, is a public hearing for H-2017-0041. I will open this with staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next application before you is a request for annexation and zoning and a preliminary plat. This site consists of 2.08 acres of land. It's owned RUT in Ada County, and is located off the southeast corner of North Black Cat and West Eustach Roads. The comprehensive plan, future land use map designation, is low-density residential. The applicant is requesting approval of annexation and zoning of 2.08 acres of land with an R8 zoning district. A step up in density is requested from low-density residential, which is three or fewer units per acre, to medium-density residential, which is three to eight dwelling units per acre, as allowed in the comprehensive plan, without an amendment to the future land use map. A preliminary plat is proposed, consisting of 10 single-family residential building lots and four common lots on 2.08 acres of land in the proposed R8 zoning district. The gross density of the proposed development is 4.8 dwelling units per acre, with a net density of 8.9 dwelling units per acre, which is consistent with the requested step up in density, if approved by council. The minimum property size is 4,034 square feet, with an average lot size of 4,960 square feet. Access is proposed via the extension of a... Access is proposed via the extension of a local street, North Geddes Avenue, currently stubbed at the southwest corner of the site. A stub street is proposed to the west for future extension and interconnectivity. Because a roundabout is planned at the Black Cat-Eustach intersection, staff was concerned about how the properties to the north and west could redevelop in the future and requested the applicant submit a concept plan addressing this, which he did. And just a quick flashback to the overall vicinity map here. And then this is the concept plan that the applicant submitted. This area here at the bottom left, or excuse me, right-hand corner is the proposed plat. The rest is the concept plan for the remaining area. The concept plan provides access to these properties and appears to meet UDC standards and fire department requirements. A common driveway is proposed for access to the three homes at the southeast corner of the development. The applicant is proposing 0.11 of an acre of common area adjacent to the cul-de-sac at the northeast corner of the site along the Eight Mile Lateral, which runs along the east boundary. The UDC does not require qualified open space and site amenities to be provided for developments that are below five acres in size. However, because the applicant is requesting approval of a step-up in density, staff recommends a qualifying site amenity such as a picnic area with tables, benches, and a shade structure or other qualified amenity is provided as a provision of the development agreement. The applicant also requests council approval of a waiver to UDC 11-3A-6 to leave the Eight Mile Lateral open and not pipe it as required by the UDC due to its large capacity. The applicant guesstimates it would take at least a 48-inch pipe to tile the facility. Conceptual building elevations were submitted as shown for future homes within this development. Building materials consist of horizontal and vertical siding with stone veneer accents. The commission did recommend approval of this project. Matt Schultz testified in favor. No one testified in opposition. Mike Sorenson commented on the application, and Matt Schultz, the applicant's representative, submitted written testimony. Key issues of discussion at the hearing were Mr. Sorenson would like a stub street provided to his property at the north boundary of the site. Mr. Sorenson's property is, it's this area right here, if you can see my pointer, which is this area right here. He was also concerned about his irrigation rights being interrupted by the proposed development, and he would like a gas line extended to his property.
Madam Mayor. Sonya, I don't mean to interrupt. I don't know if it's the screen, but I can't, I couldn't see the area that you were pointing. Could you?
Mr. Sorenson's property is directly to the north. Can you see my arrow on the area?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Key issues of discussion by the commission was the request for a step-up in density from low-density to medium-density residential. They were in favor of the request based on the proposed site design. And Mr. Sorenson's concerns regarding irrigation delivery, access, and easement for a gas line, they were in favor of the extension of a gas line. And irrigation delivery is covered in our code. They can't interrupt the irrigation rights of adjacent property owners. Commission changes to the staff recommendation. The commission added a requirement for a gas line to be extended within a public utility easement to the north property boundary for use by the adjacent property owner as requested. And they added a provision to the development agreement that homes within the development are restricted to a single-story in height and a minimum of 1,500 square feet as proposed by the applicant during the hearing. There are a couple outstanding issues for the council. First is the applicant is requesting a step-up in density from low-density residential to medium-density residential, as previously discussed, to accommodate the proposed development. And secondly, the approval of a waiver to UDC 11-3A-6 to leave the Eight Mile Lateral open and not pipe it as required due to its large capacity. There has been no written testimony submitted since the commission hearing. Staff will stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
At this time, there.
Okay. Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor Tammy. Matt Schultz, 8421 South 10 Mile in Meridian, here on behalf of Robert Campbell. He's the owner and home builder that would like to do 10 homes on this, real similar to a subdivision called Reared and Sub about a mile due south on Cherry Lane, just due south of this. All single-story, which makes this thing work. If it wasn't a single-story limitation, I wasn't going to come in here and represent it. I'd be like, "No, I'm not interested." But with the single-story and the 1,500 square foot minimum and the architecture which he's demonstrated, I've walked his houses inside and out. There's going to be nothing below 250 in this thing. Really nice. The yard maintenance is going to be included. You know, I can represent this and say, "Yeah, we think it fits." And Planning Commission concurred that it think it fits, and yes, at first blush, it didn't fit, you know, if you didn't provide those development agreement items. But with those, it's pretty straightforward. We did, I did meet with the landowner to the north, Mr. Sorenson, on-site after the last hearing, looked at the irrigation ditch, not a problem. We're going to pipe a small one that's parallel to the Eight Mile to him. The Eight Mile's huge. Nobody else has piped it, so we're asking for a waiver of that. And there's an existing gas line actually right along our west property line that he put in because he sold this property to Mr. Campbell. So, Mr. Sorenson used to own this property, and he sold it, and there was an existing gas line that we're going to protect. It fits right in the, right on that property line, so it's not a problem. So, with those issues, we just think it fits because it is a single-story. It's a good addition. It's a good mix for people that are going to want to live in the area, and maybe some people that already live in the area that built 15, 20 years ago that maybe want to go single-story, but still be in the neighborhood. So, we think it'll go pretty quick, and we think it'll be a good little addition. So, with that, stand for any questions. Thanks.
Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Matt, for you or staff, can you remind me what the fencing is adjacent to the lateral?
We're going to do wrought iron, six-foot wrought iron.
Okay.
Along the lateral, and vinyl everywhere else.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Not a question, just kind of a comment, Matt, to yours. And I agree with the, if these were crammed in two stories, I would have, I'd probably have a lot of issues with it. But there is a lot of need for a single-story. People my age, whose kids are kind of going off to college, are all complaining about two-story houses and wanting to move, so.
I think it works. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Brant Bishop signed up against and would like to provide testimony.
Thank you for staying with us.
Yeah, it's been a while.
If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Brant Bishop, 4630 West Moon Lake Drive. I actually live on the east corner of the Geddes Access.
Thank you.
The, I will admit, I was rather ambivalent about this, and so that's the reason I did not provide any testimony at the planning and zoning. But some things came out at the planning and zoning that I am concerned about, and I would like to bring to someone's attention and make sure they are considered. The first is that the builder and the developer did have a meeting with the people in the area on the 7th of March. We, of course, were concerned about the traffic that would bring to the area. They told us at that time it was a 55-plus community, and it wasn't until after the planning and zoning meeting that I asked him what happened to that. He says, "We're not going to do that." And so, that kind of raised the flag to me in dealing with him and what we could expect. The other thing that I'm concerned about is that the other five acres that's there, it is going to eventually end in houses. And I don't have a problem with houses being there. Appreciate more rooftops to help pay for you guys' salary and the things that we enjoy here. But the density is going to be a problem because if the developers that deal with that have the same ingenuity that Mr. Schultz does, I see another 25 homes being added to the 10 that's there, and we'll have 35 homes. And it came out at that meeting that because of the roundabout, all that traffic now is going to have to come out Geddes. And since we're not restricting the age on the people there, that could be, you know, any number of cars. And of course, living on that corner, I don't like that. But a real concern I have is that about two years ago, the Ada County put in a on-demand crosswalk for the children coming from Autumn Fair, walking to the Ponarosa Elementary School there. So, that is kind of the main footpath for them. And now, we're going to stick a street in the middle of it that is going to have a bunch of cars. And so, I'm real concerned about increasing the density. It's different from what is existing in the area all around it, and I think that's going to create some problems that, you know, not just for me living there, but for the youth and those people. It's just going to increase the risk for them going to school. So, I would ask you to consider that as you consider this application.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions?
Any questions from counsel? Thank you.
Larry Freeman made no indication on the project other than not wishing to testify. Marcia Roberts signed up against, not wishing to testify. I apologize, I can't read the first name, but I believe Irwin is the last name, signed up as neutral, not wishing to testify. Shirley Smith made no indication on the project other than not wishing to testify. Luann Montry made no indication on the project other than not wishing to testify, and Matt Schultz signed up for it. And that's all the sign-ups.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to provide testimony on this application? Okay. Matt, do you have final remarks?
Thank you, Mayor, Matt Schultz, again for the record. At the neighborhood meeting, the builder did talk about 55 and over, his current one, the Reared and Sub, that was 80% over 70, we think. But in terms of, you know, mandating it, enforcing a 55 and over for such a small old community, doesn't have really any clubhouse or, you know, a bigger 55 and older, it just didn't really make sense to be out there and say, "Hey, are you 52? You can't live here." You know what I mean? It just, it just didn't feel that we needed to go that far. And so, we think it'll self-regulate by the market to be, the majority of them will be north of 55, 65, if that's better. I don't know if it is or not. I don't know if it's a bad thing if there's 30 and 40-year-olds in here, but I, you know, I think it'll be fine. And as far as future traffic, it's pretty low-density. You know, there are 10 here. There might be a maximum of 20 more if we did the same type of development as this, which is the layout that I did, just to show them real quick how, you know, we weren't messing up the future development. So, 30 lots I want to access. It's really close to Black Cat. It's actually a pretty good spot to have 30 more lots come in, and it really just kind of fits. So, not saying that it's not a concern, especially if you've lived there for a lot of years on that corner with, you know, to be extended in the future, your stub street, it's been there for probably close to 20 years. I understand there's going to be new traffic, but we think it's relatively low-density, and it fits, and it's where, you know, a road needs to go. So, with that, I hope you concur with planning and zoning, and we did have a good neighborhood meeting, and hopefully it goes through. Thank you.
Well, I do understand that at a neighborhood meeting, and it's referred to a 55 and older, you would be good with it, and you wouldn't follow it because you would think that that's what it would be. I guess I would have a concern too on what is happening to the west of that and why it couldn't come together as an entire package. So, you do have some open space in there, and you show if it's not a 55 and older, how you can accommodate any of the families that are there with your open space being allowed to the family. So, I guess one of the things that councils in the past, we've liked to see a larger picture than one small piece at a time that then doesn't trigger the open space and seeing how that connectivity happens.
I appreciate it, Mayor, your comments on that. We have shown overall that it could easily have 10% open space in it, you know, in the future with ours. But this is the parcel we're dealing with. It is to, like I said, it's going to be marketed to 55 and over or 65 and older or whatever just because we think that yard maintenance and the one-story, single-story, that's who's going to buy them for this price. And it is, hopefully, the people that are already live in the area that want to just go to a single story. So, but as far as...
So, you have an HOA that will do the maintenance?
That's going to get blended into the HOA dues. The HOA dues will include that. We'll set up to, the dues will include the yard maintenance on these relatively small yards that'll be in here. So, people that move here are not going to want to move here to have a big family in a small yard. I mean, there's other choices in the area, and this is a choice that's going to be more suited to that 55 and older crowd. But as far as regulating and having a 55 and over cop that goes around and regulates that exactly, we think we'll probably have 80% 55 and over, maybe 90, maybe 100. But to enforce it, we just didn't want to go that far at this point unless the council really, really wants us to, and then we will, but we'd rather not. So...
Ms. Mylum?
So, my question was going to be almost what you stated, or your question. So, the other property is the same owner?
There's two owners. There's a couple acres just due. There's three parcels. The two west of us are a guy that we hear will never sell, ever. And then, Mr. Sorenson, who sold this piece, lives on the triangle in the corner, who just put his, yeah, you can see the three parcels there. So, there's two square parcels owned by a gentleman that'll never sell, according to him. And then, there's a triangle piece that Mr. Sorenson has put up for sale with the house on it. They each have houses on them. There's two separate owners there that aren't us.
So, it's not going to be developed by?
We don't have any, we'd love to. We'd love to buy it, but it sounds like there's a guy that doesn't want to sell right now. We haven't, you know, went and made the hardcore press on him, but it doesn't sound like he's interested. We showed a concept of how it could develop because there was a concern of, you know, limiting access and how they could still get to it. And we showed them how you could still get to it if somebody decides to develop it in the future.
So, the property owner to the north split it off, and now it's going to be another enclave because he doesn't want to come into the city, but he's selling off a piece that would come into the city.
I think it was a complicated backstory in that he didn't think he could develop this two-acre piece, but it was a legal parcel from the '70s, this two-acre piece. He didn't split it off. It's been, he owned two separate pieces. One of them, they're both legal parcels, and he sold it off and then came back and said, "Well, I want another access so I can develop mine too," kind of after the fact. Well, we're providing access that works for everybody, but maybe it's not you first, but definitely could work in the future, so.
I guess that would be one of my other concerns is creating an enclave, extending the access to it, but not having that come in as well.
Yeah, we don't control that. We'd love to, but we don't. And there's already an enclave there, per se, with three. We're taking one of them out, yeah.
But that owner has a choice too.
They do.
Um... Matt, yeah, you can't make the comment from there, but, sir?
If you can come up.
If you can come up here, just restate your name and...
Brant Bishop, 4630 West Moon Lake Drive.
Thank you.
The three-acre parcel does have a for-sale sign on it again now. He's kind of in a predicament because the design they have has landlocked that. There's no access with that unless they go through the two acres, and that guy doesn't want to sell. So, I don't know what the resolution is to that, but he's just decided he wants out because he can't do anything with it. And I don't know if the person that moves in there, if they'll be grandfathered in with access because of the roundabout, or if they're going to have to do something and get access to Geddes to get off of their property once they purchase it, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
Mayor, Matt Schultz, again for the record.
once they purchase it, so.
Thank you.
Mayor, Matt Schultz again for the record. If I can just talk about that. We had this discussion on planning and zoning. His access won't get taken away by the roundabout to the house. He has a house and two or three acres for sale right now. If anybody wants to develop it, then they're going to have to wait till things kind of go their way, which is how development works. Sometimes you wait for the next guy to do his thing. But as far as taking away their access, he's not in a predicament. The person who buys it's not in a predicament. They have access to their house. And if somebody takes away access to their house, they got to pay for it. You know, ACHD would have to pay for it. And they're not going to take away access to a driveway right there. If he wants to redevelop it into 10 or 12 lots, then yeah. His access to, is going to get taken away. But that'll be a condition of development. I'm not taking away his access. I haven't done anything except for this little two acres here in the corner, so.
Any further questions from council?
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum?
So you guys are, you're trying to buy that, the other three acres? Or you're not?
We just talked about it, it'd be nice, you know, because it's what we do for a living. But it's not real feasible without the other couple parcels right now at this date. And that could change. You know, it could change, but right now it doesn't sound like it's feasible. But that could change tomorrow or whenever, you never know.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
Matt, one of the challenges is the design and the request for that platted connectivity to the north. Because absent that, I can, a request to annex and connect to Black Cat's not going to fly. So it does, in essence, to the development further, not use it as a single-family residence. So talk a little bit about the request to stub to the north. And I assume if that was unfeasible, why? It wasn't designed that way.
Yeah. Mayor Tammy and Councilman Borton, we could provide a stub street to the north. We could. We talked about it at planning commission with your staff as well. They chimed in that it would make a real inefficient way to do it, to provide a stub so he could develop first without that guy, if that's your intent. We could do that. If you say, "We would approve this, but only based on punching that stub street north," then we would do it. I don't think it's a deniable thing to shoot us down on not providing it, but we just felt like for the overall master plan, what we did was a good place to put it. And staff and P&amp;Z agreed with that.
But I guess, why wouldn't you do that? If you said the guy to the west has said they'll never sell, then you essentially do landlock the property to the north.
People say stuff all the time. Mayor, you never know if he's just blustering until you get in front of him and say, "Here's a check." You just never know, you know, what they're going to do. So that's just in passing, he says that. We don't think it's landlocked forever. We just think temporarily, he's just, maybe he's jockeying for a lot of money. Who knows? But just the guy showed up at the neighborhood meeting, and I guess he lives alone, and he is one of those kind of guys that just wants to be there and not move anywhere else, you know, for now. And that could change. But we often see these things where not every parcel is developable immediately. You know, there's sometimes steps that need to be made for any certain parcel to get developed. And this is one that's like that. You know, if you said, "Hey, we're not going to approve it unless you provide that stub street," we'd do it. But we're just, this is what we submitted, and we asked that it go this way. But we're flexible if need be.
Any other questions from council?
I have none, Mayor.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
Maybe it's a question for Matt again, but I applaud the efforts to try and develop this little nook of county property. But the lack of access to the north still kind of lingers as a concern. And I don't know if perhaps there was a previously designed plat that showed the access and, or something that showed why it wouldn't work or it's inefficient. You made reference to discussions with planning staff. That might help me understand why it's a bad idea. I appreciate the fact that you're representing, you're willing to modify it, to stub it to the north. That in itself is hard to do on the fly. I just can't visualize what the northern stub does to diminish the development potential of all the parcels. If there was something else drawn out there, I'd probably want to see it. And if there's not, I don't want to make a bunch of extra work. But that would help illustrate.
Can you flash that back, Sonia, that overall, please? Actually, back to that little layout.
You've done amazing things with smart parcels.
Small parcels are tough. And Caleb made a comment, you know, he said, you know, because he can visualize this stuff, of how that road going north and being really pinched up against the canal, it just wouldn't flow as good. It wouldn't be something you would choose as a layout for this whole development. If you had to, then you'd do it. You know, if you absolutely had to, you'd do it. So it just doesn't flow as well going up that way. You've got some, where our property line is, you have some property undevelopable on the other side of it. It just wouldn't flow as well as this one does. So this was the first layout that came to mind of how the remainder property could develop. The remainder property being all of the remainder property is what our instructions were. So I didn't do an alternate of if this one doesn't develop. And so, like I said, we're flexible. If it's a deal breaker, we'll lose a lot and do it. We prefer not to. So we'd like that to be one of your two motions, and hopefully denial's not on the table. But we prefer to move forward that way, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks. Madam Mayor, I invite anyone else. I may be the only one who at least had some pause with no stub to the north, so.
You're not the only one, if you can include me. So it's a conundrum.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Lil Roberts?
I agree. I'm struggling with not having any access to the north.
Well, council, if you want to have discussion or close public hearing-
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
A question back for the applicant who's-
Yes?
The removal of a lot, it sounds, the reference makes it sound easy. I know it's not. Perhaps it's costly, too, but it may be helpful to see that alternate layout that would, how a stub to the north would be incorporated. I think the project's great.
You think it would do what?
It's great.
Yeah, okay.
I'm supportive of it. But it really would be helpful to see, if it's stubbed to the north, here's how, from my planning experience and working with our staff, it could look.
Excuse me, Mayor, Councilman Borton. You mean, as it reflects to our layout or to the future layout, how the future property would lay out with the stub to the north?
Madam Mayor, probably the future layout of the remaining three parcels. I appreciate what you did in trying to anticipate how it could efficiently lay out like this. I don't know if there's a Plan B concept that would show how, if it were stubbed to the north.
It wouldn't look very good, I'll tell you that, from a development standpoint. And you've got to trust me on that. I know that, you know, you would like to see it, but it was just, just the inefficiency, it just kind of blows up. But we could do it.
Well, and Madam Mayor, to that point, if that's the case, it'd be helpful to see, because it doesn't make sense for us to sit here and say-
It could help us.
Drop a stub to the north.
It could help us, I know. It might help us not have to provide a stub if it doesn't work very well, so.
Yeah.
No, I-
I want you to-
No, I get it. So as far as it reflects to our layout, we basically have two, instead of three lots on north, we'd have two and just have that road running straight north. And it would still have an opportunity to go to the west as well. It would be essentially a four-way intersection right there. Instead of a T is what that would be. That's the only way to do it, to get it in there. And so you'd lose the one lot and have nine instead of 10 and provide for two different ways to get to that, that way to get the property to the west as well as a way to get the property to the north. It just gets real inefficient, you know. Whether you guys care if it's inefficient or not, I don't know. But it just doesn't look as slick as this does and all that. You know, that's how it's going to be, so.
So is the desire to continue this with, to see what that alternative plan would look like?
Madam Mayor? Me it is. Again, Matt, I don't want to put you in a hard spot on this, but the alternative would be to approve it and ask you to stub it to the north, kind of winging it on how what you envision to be the challenges would actually be understood by us.
And I don't know if cost is a concern for you, an inefficiency. And I mean, just for us, putting an extra stub street is obviously lose a lot, and you have the extra sewer water, pavement, curb, border, sidewalk. You know, huge impact to a very small site. That's the one right off the top. Secondly, with an inefficient layout, those development costs go high per lot and just starts, it just starts not looking as good. I mean, we would do this one. Anything else, it's like, eh, you know, you only have 18 or 17 lots and there are, you know, more road per lot. And, you know, there's just some criteria that I don't know how you're going to judge me on it. You know, is it going to be judged on inefficiencies? Is it going to be judged on, you know, per lot costs? And from our standpoint, it would be a major hurt to our property to extend that to the north.
It's a major hit to the property to the north not having access and being landlocked.
He's not landlocked. He's got access from a driveway, you know? Yeah.
Saying different thing.
Yeah.
The development potential is more limited absent the stub to the north, I think. Not technically landlocked, but strained from a development perspective. Which is why we stub often to the next.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
If we stub it to the north, there's not much room between it and the ditch.
Yes.
But in the same, and in the same token, that north property is going to only be designed one way or it's probably not going to be the other. The way Matt's drawn it is we've got to have, whoever does it has got to have all the property. I mean, you're going through the property to the west, and then you're going to the north. I hate to landlock anybody, but my preference would be to take and where that hits the property line, just stub it in as a road. And we've done this many a times on the through roads and then just put a barrier up there, a future road.
Right here.
Just put a barrier right there.
I agree. I agree.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Madam Mayor, I only bring it up, I don't know where one else is on that particular issue. And I don't know if there's an alternative means that if it's left vacant for a future road, that if the other parcels were to come in, it could then be abandoned and become a build of a lot again. Might be making more of an issue, but does that make sense?
Anything else from council?
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum?
I'm still, and I'm just getting more confused, I guess, with this whole landlocking, this discussion. Because Matt's saying they're not landlocked. And you guys are saying that it looks like they are landlocked. And so how can I make a decision if I don't understand the-
Because ACHD will not let that northern lot access out onto Black Cat. So the only access they would have is through this lot. Or as the applicant conceptionally drew out, which would necessitate two other parcels developing to even get access. So I think that's the issue at hand.
Yeah. If I could, Mayor, council, I'll make an executive decision here. And just go ahead and put a condition on us that we provide a stub street to the north on that northwest property line. What we'd do is we'd just kind of shift the road over a little bit and do two-thirds on one side and have a T, a T right here. And so that'll allow some flexibility on whether that road just kind of continues north or it'll provide a way for this guy to still develop in the interim if he wants to first. So I'm willing to make that change. Hopefully, we don't have to, you know, we can just make a condition of approval of the final plat that we have as stub streets to the north. And if we lose a lot, so be it. If we can do it without losing a lot, great. But I think we're going to lose a lot to do it. So that's just how it goes. But if that would facilitate this thing moving forward, I'm just going to make that decision because I think that's wise at this point.
Mr. Palmer?
What?
It is very rare that council approves a plat without seeing it. That would be a concern. And I'm sure staff is very competent, but they don't like having all of that on them. They like to see what, that council sees what they're approving.
Madam Mayor?
Putting words in everyone's mouth. Mr. Palmer?
I look at the property at Amity and Eagle, somewhat similar situation. Because of the roundabout, there was no way for the guy that lives around the corner to be able to connect to either Amity or Eagle, despite how bad he wanted to take advantage of the value of his property. But when you sit on your hands and everyone around you develops and you don't buy up any of that property, then you can't stop what happens around you when you don't own it. And so I feel like this makes sense. It allows to be able to connect there when it gets developed. In the meantime, they can keep on keeping on as they are. Or they can decide to take advantage now or later, but everyone else can't just sit on their hands while somebody else decides to. And I really hate to tell somebody you're not allowed to make as much money on your property because somebody around you doesn't want to do anything yet. So while he's wanting to go ahead and make his decision, I think as it's presented before us, it makes sense. And I don't know if any, we've got three of us that have chimed in on it. I don't know if the other three want to before we decide on making motions or whatnot. I don't know if the other three want to before we decide on making motions or whatnot.
Mr. Palmer, it has been said that that property is for sale. So they are trying to do something, but if you don't give them access, they're not going to be able to. That's, that's a head-scratcher there.
And which one exactly is for sale?
The northern piece.
The triangular piece.
And that doesn't gain access from the...
No. You'd have to get access through these two lots.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
But isn't he the same guy that sold this property to these people? He should have gotten himself an easement.
Here we thought it was an easy thing. Jeez, Matt.
Gets more valuable once they get this developed.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Kudos to Councilmember Palmer for recalling the Luke Farm out at, at Eagle and Amity. And I do see some...
It's a pig farm.
What do I call it? The Luke Farm as opposed to the pig farm? That's very funny. I see a lot of similarities here. And I, Councilmember Palmer brought up a very, very good point. I'm not going to be one to ask the applicant to give up one of very few lots or potential down the way. I think that's, it's not the council member I want to be. I don't, I don't see this property being landlocked. Maybe those of you are seeing things differently than I am, but to ask this applicant to give up one lot when there's not much there to begin with, and the upside being annexing another piece of these enclaves and closing up the Swiss cheese that's in the county, to me, seems like a benefit. So I'm supportive of the application as is. I wouldn't ask you to change it.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move we close the public hearing on H. 2017-0041.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move we approve H. 2017-0041 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
That includes leaving eight mile lateral open?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
No.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay, item 10A is under our fire department, and I assume this is Deputy Chief Bonjurnos.
Got a nice ring to it.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I know Chief Palmer was a great fire, fire marshal. I have big shoes to fill. What we have before you tonight is a budget amendment. As you know, Pam Moore, our public education specialist, gets donations throughout the year for her public education events and stuff that she does. So this is just to formalize taking those donations and putting them into a line item budget to where she can actually access that money and spend it. Unfortunately, in September, there was a coding error done where the Idaho Fire Chiefs gave a grant of $2,500 to Pam, and it was coded in FY16 instead of FY17. So the total amendment request is $2,500, and then the additional $11,330 is there. It's just a request to move it to where she can access and spend it.
Very good. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Any questions from counsel?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I move we approve the public education budget for a not-to-exceed amount of $13,830.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item 10A. Any discussion from counsel? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
All ayes, most carried. All right, we got it. Item B is under our legal department, and I'll turn this over to Mr. Neri.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, I have a one-hour presentation. It shouldn't be that bad. Actually, we have a letter that's in the packet in front of you. I think there's a gentleman here to answer questions about it. Similar to the TEFAH hearing that we've done for other types of entities, this is a Wisconsin public authority is issuing some bonds. They need to have assurance that the city is approval of the process that they're following. The city isn't approving the bonds, and the city has no legal or monetary obligation to the bonds, but they are required to sign off on it. Mr. Byrd, from my office, has been in contact with, probably with this gentleman that's here, and Mr. Fullerton, is that right?
Mr. Hasty.
No.
Dr. Hasty.
Oh, oh, Dr. Hasty. So they're with their counsel, and he, his opinion, their counsel, was that the mayor could sign this alone. Because of the nature of it, and the amount, and the obligation, or the approval that we're granting, Ted and I both felt more comfortable that the council see this and also basically approve the mayor signing this letter and moving forward. So if you have any other questions, I think you'd have to ask the other...
Dr. Hasty.
Dr. Hastings.
Mr. Hasty. Robert, do you have anything you want to add? Okay. Counsel, any questions for Dr. Hasty?
I have none. Mr. Burton, you're over legal.
Anybody in the public want to speak to it?
Great. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak to this?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
I move that we approve 10B, to approve the letter required. Have you sign it?
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
All ayes, most carried. Thank you for waiting three hours for that.
Thank you so much.
Does he have a City of Meridian pen? I feel like if he sits through it, he should get one.
Mr., Dr. Hasty, I will give you a City of Meridian pen, because I do think you deserve it after sitting through this.
The only question is, on the bonds.
Item C is under the mayor's office. Counsel, you do have the city survey results, and I hope you enjoyed reading. It was enjoyable reading. I would ask if you have any questions. If not, we would like it if you could officially accept these results.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Got any discussion? If not, I would make a motion that we accept the city survey results.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
All ayes, most carried. Item 11A is ordinance 17-1734. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian ordinance number 17-1734, and ordinance amending Meridian City Code Section 8-1-3C1, specifying exemptions to general use zone amenity standards, amending Meridian City Code Section 8-1-3D3, allowing barriers to be affixed to sidewalks in the downtown core, and providing an effective date.
You've heard it. Ordinance read by title only. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to hear it read in its entirety? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Mylum.
I move that we approve ordinance number 17-1734 with suspension rules.
Second.
Got a motion to approve it with a second? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
We go to item B. Mr. Clerk, would you read that by title only?
Thank you, Mr. President. City of Meridian ordinance number 17-1732B, and ordinance file number H-2016-0027 Maverick for annexation for part of the northeast quarter of Section 7 Township 3 North, Range 1 East, Boise Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in Attachment A and annexing certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Meridian, as requested by the City of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of said lands from C2 to CG, General Retail and Service Commercial District, in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
You heard the ordinance read by title only. Is there anybody that like it? In its entirety, seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Mylum.
I move that we approve ordinance number 17-1732B with suspension rules.
Second.
Got a motion to approve, and second? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
Counsel, any future meeting topics?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I don't know who to ask, because we're missing some, some folks. But I just was hoping to get some clarification on next week's meeting. I think we have a meeting on the strategic plan at four. I just was getting clarification of if we're doing the budgetary piece first, or meeting still is at four, for amending the agenda to include the last two or the remaining member, remaining pieces of the budget. That's correct?
Mr. Cavanagh, as I understood it, we were going to amend the, the meeting agenda to include those two items that we didn't get on the budget today at start, and then we'll do the strategic. Am I not right, Mayor?
And they would be the first F, two items starting at four.
Great.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Palmer.
Well, we're talking about next week's meeting. May we have access to the new beautiful software? Should I be able to have some time to go over every level of everything before we have the meeting and discuss it?
I, I don't know. You, you got, did that update go out?
Madam Mayor, are you referring to the emails that we exchanged yesterday?
Was it just yesterday?
I think it was yesterday. I sent you back a question, just clarifying that I was supposed to send that report to directors and counsel.
Yes.
Okay. I will send it out.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
That's me, Mr. Cavanagh, all along. Just for clarification, it's okay. It's been, it's been a long day. So just for, for clarification, then, we will have access to the software tool before next Tuesday's meeting?
The report has everything in it. I, I don't know what in addition you have, other than, I guess it would show the completed tactics. So...
Yes. Great.
Is that available?
Madam Mayor, yes, the, it is available. I just have to do a request to IT to have them turn it on and set it out. They've set it up, but it hasn't been sent out to everybody.
So all the, the issues with the percentages have all been cleaned up?
Yes.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Oh, this week is Dairy Day's events. Pancake Feed Thursday at 4:00 in Story Park, Parade Friday at 6:45, Art Show on Saturday at 9:00, Youth Farmers Market from 9:00 to noon on Saturday, and the Lions Rodeo Saturday and Sunday.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
The Pancake Feed is at the Merchant Building at the Speedway, not at Story Park.
What?
Yeah, we've, we've moved it back up there.
Fantastic.
And did you say, did you say about the art show on Saturday?
Yes.
Okay.
I did. If there's nothing further, under item 12, item 13 is executive session. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we go into executive session as per Idaho State Code 74206, E and F.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to adjourn into executive session. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.